Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting of July 10th, 2019. Can I have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff here, Salem Derby. Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peake.
Here.
Dan Riss.
Present.
Could I please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag is behind us again. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes of June 5th?
I'm moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Can I have a motion for approval of minutes of June 19th?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion second of the minutes of June 19th. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Stayed.
Two abstentions. Any noes? Okay, motion still passes. Public speak time. If there's anyone in the public who would like to address anything other than what's in the public hearings, is this your time? If you could please come to the podium and just state your name and address. That would be terrific. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Kuzinski. I live at 47 Hanbrook Drive. I'm not here to talk about the roundabout because I know that all of you are committed to our schools and to our children. So I know that no matter how many issues you might have with the land acquisition particulars, I really believe you're going to approve it. So I'm going to thank you in advance. Thank you. What I am here for is to bring you a resolution that I hope you'll consider at your next meeting. It concerns the abuse of migrant children in our detention centers. This is not a partisan issue. It is a humane treatment of children issue. I firmly believe that no matter how anyone in this country feels about our immigration policy, we all agree that all children, no matter how they got here or where they came from, deserve to be nurtured and protected. And I know it feels like there's nothing we can do and that this problem is happening too far away to make a difference. But if we speak up and other cities speak up, the momentum will spread. I am one small voice asking the City Council to be the voice of 16,000 and then to spread that message to others. If we speak up, others will follow. I am asking that you pass this resolution at your next meeting and then share it with other cities and other elected officials and lastly with our president. And I have copies of this, so I'm just going to read it. Whereas minor children should never be used as pawns in order to make a statement to adults. And whereas minor children are vulnerable and unable to protect themselves. And whereas infants and toddlers need to be nurtured by responsible and caring adults. And whereas all children need clean food and water. And whereas all children need a safe and comfortable place to sleep. And whereas children who are mistreated physically, mentally, or emotionally carry those scars into adulthood. And whereas all children and teens have the basic human right to be protected and safeguarded from harm. And whereas children deserve our care and protection, no matter where they come from or how they got here. And therefore be resolved that the East Hampton City Council is calling for the United States government to immediately stop and correct the abusive treatment of migrant children in detention centers. Thank you. And I have copies.
You know him, right?
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
I'll take my leave.
Okay, please, sir, if you can squirm and just state your name for the address.
My name is Bill Newman and I'm the Director of the Western Massachusetts Office of the American Civil Liberties Union and more precisely the Director of the Western Massachusetts Regional Office of the ACLU of Massachusetts, which is a mouthful, so I apologize. And I've been before this council, before speaking about the, what is now the welcoming city ordinance, and I'd just like to make a few brief remarks if I might.
Sir, is this relation to, is it pertaining to that ordinance?
It is.
Okay, so we actually, this is just for things other than what's in the public hearing?
Other than in the hearing. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Of course, no problem. Anyone else in the public would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Jean Francis and I live at 15 Cottage Street. And I just want to follow up on what was just said. Friday night, there's going to be a national, well, I mean, here in our area in Greenfield, there's going to be a silent vigil or vigil at a detention center in Greenfield protesting the keeping of these children. So just want everybody to know that. And there are also flyers back on the table that you can pick one up, so you'll know about it. But it's at 5:30 at 160 Elm Street at the Franklin County Prison. And I guess it's going to be happening nationally, but that's where ours is going to be happening, here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to come in, other than what's on the public hearing? One more person.
My name is John Courtney. I live in Southampton. We're having a problem with our land and I need a little bit of help. There's a cartel in town that, once our family buys land, they immediately register on it. They write the deeds up, kick into the registry. We pay taxes on it and we've owned the land since 1894, some other land since 1902, and some other land since 1921. We never sold very much of it. My father sold one piece, dared Sherry to put in an auto body shop and I guess he was working for Bernie Gaul and he put in an apartment building, which is okay. He bought the land. But what happened was along the way, they came back to have a deed to the lands. They pushed this land up here and pushed another piece over here. So make a long short story short, they register on all of our land on our farm in East Hampton. Before Carolyn Gaul died, her sons put the land in Southampton and in East Hampton under Carolyn Gaul's name. Then when she died, it got kicked back to the sons. Must be how you clean up land that you shouldn't have. So it's too hard to explain to you as a group. And I'm not trying to belittle anybody, but it took me a year and a half to figure it out because I'm not the smartest tool in the shed. I haven't had much luck with the city council. So what I like to do, I know JP Kuzinski. I don't think he's personally a fan of mine, but that's okay. I think he's honest. And one other person here to explain it to. My goal is to get a letter out of the city council to have the Attorney General look at it. Now, the mayor's too busy and the police chief's too busy. But it's an interesting piece of land, both in East Hampton and Southampton. So what they do when somebody dies, they snag a relative and say, hey, you own this piece of land. Now, we have deeds to the land McDonald's is on. We have deeds to the land that the Early Times was on. We have deeds to several houses up on Highland Avenue. They just sold a house.
Mr. Courtney, I think...
You don't want to hear it. I know that.
No, I just say, you know, we can't do anything really right now.
No, I know that.
I would think...
I would just like two people in the next week or week and a half to sit down with me for two hours so I could explain it to them.
Well, certainly, especially with Counsel Kuzinski's property background, he may be helpful. I mean, my initial impression, it sounds like you may be more of a legal lawyer kind of aspect.
You would say that it's illegal, but the problem I have is to hire a lawyer smart enough to just understand what I understand, and I don't understand very much. They're going to want $50,000 or $100,000. I think because it's racketeering, it's obviously racketeering under the RICO Act. This isn't somebody making a mistake on property. These are people going out and stealing property.
I think certainly if you have a valid point, then, you know, Counsel Kuzinski...
So anybody want to volunteer for a couple hours? I'll buy the beer.
I'd certainly be happy to meet if I had someone else in the council that might be able to meet with us. Owen, I see Owen's hand, Tom.
Somebody else volunteer?
Okay. It's not a matter before.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Sorry for wasting your time.
No, 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 you didn't waste our time at all. I just, I want to make sure we can help the best we can. I'm not sure right now is, we may not affect it. Anyone else from the public would like to address the council or something, again, other than what's on the public hearings? No, okay. Moving on, communications for elected boards and committees. Counselor said, did you want to mention about the planning board and Kenneth's equity application?
Oh, we could probably report that during ordinance, no?
Okay, sure. Yeah, sure. If you want to do that down.
Yeah, I think that's...
Correspondence announcement relating to the restricted appraisal for portions of 198 Park Street. Mayor, would you probably be touching on that in your communications? Okay, so we'll do that, the same thing. So then we are at mayor communications. Mayor LaShia Pell.
I just wanted to mention during mayor communications, first of all gratitude for the special meeting in June to get this to public hearing tonight. There is, and we'll hear details of what I'm asking for via vote from the City Council, but I did want to give some context to what this proposal in front of you that Jeff Bag has put the memo to is for a school project that won past the public vote by a large gap, 12,000, I mean, sorry, 12% as well as this council and my office being in support of the project. The plans have been public for quite some time and the, my asks before you around discontinuance and acquisition have been discussed for a while in the school building committee. The timeline is that we want to be prepared to go to bid as soon as we possibly can on the school project. To do that, we must have total control and access to the site the school is going to be built on. One, there was some confusion with the Massachusetts School Building Authority around if we have control and access now, and we do because we have the two driveways and they won't be disturbed. And second, that even though the roundabout is an ad alternate, depending on the cost of the program, we still need to have control, access, and basically acquire the piece of property at 189, 198 Park Street. So I just wanted to give the context. We're hoping to go out to bid end of summer, early fall, and want those documents prepared, get them to MSBA for their okay. I would ask the president, as far as comment from the school building committee, should that happen now or do you want to wait to the full public hearing on the issue?
Full public hearing.
Great. My second is, and in your packet, I, just because of the amount of conversation in certainly City Hall, among officials and departments, and emails and comments that we have gotten from the public, I included some copies of those emails up until we, up until Thursday at 11:30 a.m. to make the, they come in. I won't weigh in on the pro or con. I didn't vote on, I didn't count where it came, but I think the comments are very relative and they give a very full scope to any ordinances that you would consider around bicycles and types of electric assist, electric pedal assist, and so forth. So I just wanted to explain why I put that information in your packet.
Okay. And again, for the public, those are, if you want to see those comments, they will be available through the city clerk's office because they are public record. Are there any questions for the mayor before she leaves? Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's see if we can move on. A couple of standing committees. Counselor, Finance Counselor Lynch.
Nothing else to report except for the public hearing items.
Okay, and do you have another meeting scheduled?
We don't have another meeting. There's nothing on the agenda.
Okay, great. Public Safety Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting two weeks ago and we discussed about two topics. One of them was the on-street parking restriction and we, as a committee, decided to table it, but we want to keep it in the agenda. The reason we table it is because the city is doing a fucking analysis and we want to keep it on the agenda so that way that when they end the analysis, we can bring it back to the subcommittee. We vote to do that as a committee. The second topic that we was talking about, there was a pedestrian safety review. As everybody know after the tragic of one resident of East Hampton, we were trying to look of the pedestrian issue, safety in different street. As a committee, we decide, we make a motion, the 3-2-0 to open the discussion to the whole city, not just to Main Union and Cottage Street. We want to see how all the streets are safe for the pedestrians. So in making a motion, I want to, I want to make a motion to open it to the full city to review the pedestrian safety.
My second.
I guess a little confused, does it mean you're, I mean, wouldn't that be your subcommittee? Wouldn't that be how you would approach that, is have a, no?
We were already there and we vote 3-2-0 to open it to the full city. But because we're changing it, I think we should make a motion here to, or it is not necessary.
Do I say correctly, you're trying to change the scope of the discussion?
Yes, yes. Instead of just three street, now we're going to see it to the full city.
I think it's appropriate for the council to act unless if a subcommittee is going to take an issue that was really very limited to one area and now opened it up to the entire city as a scope, then I think you're doing the right thing by your committee bringing it to the full council and asking for higher endorsement.
So Barb, wouldn't that just be a matter of him then submitting a request to...
I'll just take your vote and I'll just say pedestrian safety review.
Oh, take your vote, what do you mean?
I mean, Omar's made a motion.
Yes.
You can vote on it and then I'll just adjust the agenda.
Okay.
I think.
Okay. And so I'm sorry...
Then the public would all be informed that now we're talking about a much broader scope of issue.
Yes, instead of your three streets.
Okay, so it's now you're looking for a public hearing at this point?
No, no, it's not public hearing. No, I never mentioned a public hearing.
Okay, great, I'm sorry. And so a motion was made, is that correct?
Yes.
Was there a second?
My second.
Okay, okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Yeah, and we said, next meeting is going to August 6th at 6:00 p.m., room number one, and that's conclude.
Did you want an extension?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I need an extension for the on-street parking restriction, 120 days.
190.
Oh, 90 is the max, I didn't realize that.
90, yeah, so 90 days.
Okay, motion second for 90-day extension. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion passes.
That's conclude.
Okay, maybe we'll get appointments before we open public hearings.
Sure. So we met this evening to review two mayoral appointments. One for the telecommunications committee, Dan Gilbert. The second to the Veterans Council, Charles Duffy. I spoke with both nominees and I just want to give a little summary of the conversation. So Dan Gilbert, the telecommunications committee, he's been in East Hampton for two years. He grew up in the Valley. He's been interested in municipal broadband for quite a while and he's been following the progress in Leverett, Mass. for years out of curiosity and interest. That alone sold me, if you're going to take that much time to look in another city. He believes that the internet access is akin to a utility and should be treated that way rather than having access through a corporate gatekeeper who is essentially a monopoly. He's also very interested in ranked choice voting and attended the charter meetings and telecommunications committee meetings, and he had a side comment that in those meetings, he felt it was an honor to be in the room with the folks who were working on those issues. So I thought that was pretty impressive. So I will take, make a motion to approve Dan Gilbert to the telecommunications committee with a term expiration of 12/31/2021.
Second.
Motion second to approve Dan Gilbert at telecommunications committee. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Second was Charles Duffy to the Veterans Council. He has lived in East Hampton for 30 years. He was in the Navy from 1966 to 1969. He was sent to the Mediterranean twice. He's been a member of the American Legion for 20 years, a member of Vietnam vets post 111 for 20 years, post 224 for 15 years. He recently got involved with the disabled American veterans and is a driver in Leeds where he takes vets to medical appointments anywhere from two to five days a week. So I will make a motion to approve Charles Duffy to the Veterans Council with a term expiration of 12/31/2021.
Motion second to approve Charles Duffy to the Veterans Council. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
We also have additional appointments this evening that I would like to move to the appointment subcommittee. We have city council appointments, Valerie Bernier for city auditor with a term expiration of 9/1/2022, and Hetal Patel, the assistant city auditor with an expiration date of September 1st, 2022. I will make a motion to move both of these appointments to the appointment subcommittee.
Second.
Motion second to move these to appointment subcommittee. And you probably noticed, but again, there's, we have three appointments in the city which are actually city council, not mayor appointments, this is one of them. So we have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And the final two mayoral appointments were Patricia Hawkins to the telecom advisory committee with a term expiration 12/31/2021, David Jaffe for the manhand rail trail committee with a term expiration of 12/31/21/2021. I'll make a motion to move those to the appointment subcommittee.
Motion second to move the previous red names to the boards of committee appointments committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And we've set our next meeting for August 7th at 5:30 p.m. That's conclude.
Thank you. Okay, motion to open public hearings.
Second.
Again, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Same, a motion passes. Public hearings open. Just a couple, we're doing a little bit out of order. We're going to deal with the welcoming committee trust ordinance first. We'll have Counselor Coniff and ordinance, some committee make their comments, then the city officials, then the public, and then they make a motion and then a vote. I just ask if you come up to speak, if you could try to keep, because there's so many of your, your comments to two minutes or less. If your comments are being reflected by a lot of people, then don't feel there's necessarily a need to come up and comment if you feel that other people are making your same point. Afterwards, because we have other business to come to, please take two minutes, but try to clear the room and have your discussions outside so we can continue on with other business because we have the roundabout and that important business after this is taken care of. So...
Of course you want to stick around.
Yes, of course, if you want to stick around for the rest of it, you're welcome to. Counselor Coniff, you can lead off then.
Okay, I'm trying to work with technology which could dig me in. You're awake me. I'm awake this afternoon, so naturally it doesn't work now. Talk amongst yourselves. It's the little victories. Okay. So I want to kind of walk through the ordinance that we're proposing around welcoming community trust. I want to walk through it in a way that hopefully will make it more digestible and palatable. We're going to talk about each specific part of the ordinance and then we're going to talk about what the attorney had to say about that particular piece of the ordinance. And then we're going to have Counselor Gomez come up and read a few testimonies that we have gotten from a wide variety of sources and then we'll open it up for anyone in the city offices to comment and then we'll open it up to the public. Does that sound good? Okay. So, a couple of things I just wanted to start with. So we know that there are about 11 million undocumented immigrants in the United States. These undocumented immigrants pay about $11.7 billion a year in taxes, about 8% of whatever income they may get. There are 267,000 undocumented immigrants that identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. And because LGBTQ undocumented people find themselves at the intersection of two already marginalized groups, the LGBT population and the undocumented population, they are among society's most vulnerable individuals. Merely being an undocumented immigrant by law is a civil matter. It is not criminal. Civil matters result in penalties. Criminal matters result in a punishment. Congress decides what is civil and what is criminal, and they have ruled that immigration violations are civil violations. East Hampton has not been and will not protect criminals. This ordinance is not about protecting criminals. None of us could approve that, none of us would approve that. So I want, I have that on like five pages just to remind everyone that's not what this is about. So what is it going to mean if we approve this ordinance tonight? Well, what it's going to mean for the undocumented immigrants is that they will just continue to go about their life. They can participate in all that East Hampton has to offer and they can enjoy it. They can go to school. They can have access to education. They can live in East Hampton knowing that their life and their value to this community is greater than their immigration status. The resources of East Hampton will not be voluntarily spent on the responsibilities of the federal government. What will it mean to the rest of us in East Hampton? It means safety. It means we're going to be safer. Why? Because now those individuals who have been marginalized and live in fear will be able to report if they have become victims of crime. If they're able to do that freely, we become safer because now those criminals can be apprehended. If they are a witness to a crime, they can report that. So as a result of that, we all can live in a safer city. At a time when violence against LGBT immigrants is rising, this ordinance will allow this population in particular to seek assistance from law enforcement if they are victims of violent crime. Again, it's about the second time I've said it, this ordinance will not protect anyone who has committed a crime in any way. And on the right-hand side, I have some statistics from a research company that talked about the crime rates in, by undocumented immigrants, and they are the yellow bar that you see up on that chart. The red bar are all of us. So we are committing more violent crimes than any undocumented population that currently is living in this country. So now, when we talk about the ordinance, it has five, six sections to it, and I'm just going to go through each one. The first one is around equal treatment. East Hampton will treat all persons equally, enforce laws, and serve the public without consideration of immigration status. And then it has more verbiage there. Citizenship, immigration status, national origin, race, and ethnicity shall have no bearing on an individual's treatment by employees or officers of the East Hampton agencies or departments. According to our city solicitor, Mark Tanner, the city can validly prohibit its city officials from each of the foregoing activities that I just stated without violating any state or federal law. The next part of the ordinance is about inquiries into immigration status. Officers and employees of East Hampton may not inquire about the immigration status of any victim, suspect, arrestee, 9/11 caller, or other member of the public with whom they have contact except as required to provide a public benefit or required by law such as firearms licensing, CHS, AFIS, and things like that. According again to the East Hampton Police Department manual, I took a section out of there and a quote that's actually in the manual, it's been in the manual for a long, long time, and this is how they operate. Officers shall not question any person about his or her specific citizenship or immigration status unless that person is reasonably believed to be involved in one or more of the activities identified in Section 5. And the activities I put at the bottom are basically murder, assault, assault and battery, mayhem, we'll have to talk chief about what mayhem is at some point, and armed robbery. So all of the things we don't want people to be doing, we're not going to prevent the police from acting on those things. According to the city attorney, he has affirmed that this does not violate state or federal laws. The ordinance merely prohibits gratuitous inquiries where not required by law. The ordinance merely prohibits gratuitous inquiries where not required by law. Immigration benefit programs. So, what this really means is that a person's immigration status will not prevent them or inhibit the city from participating in any government operation or program that confers an immigration benefit to them, such as U-VISA, T-VISA, and the Federal Violence Against Women Act. The definitions are at, excuse me, at the bottom, I'm not going to go through all of them, but essentially, it allows us to continue to utilize those programs without any implications from this ordinance. Again, the attorney affirmed that this does not violate state or federal laws. ICE detainers and administrative warrants. No city official, officer, or employee of the East Hampton Police Department may arrest or detain an individual solely on the basis, solely on the basis of an ICE detainer or ICE administrative warrant, which are noncriminal. So, our attorney had a long, there is a lot of detail behind this, and I believe we can probably get some, some information to everybody who wants it around the full breadth of the opinion. But, I took this section from, Massachusetts state and local officials are prohibited from honoring detainer requests and warrants absent independent probable cause to hold or arrest the person. This is from Lund v. Commonwealth. Further, unless there is a specific non-immigration reason for holding an individual, detaining a person because ICE requested it, may constitute an unlawful arrest and may expose the city and its city officials to civil liability. Federal requests for information. No city official shall provide an ICE officer with the following information relating to a person in the custody of the department, of the department, information about an individual's incarceration status, length of detention, home address, work address, personal information other than citizenship or immigration status, hearing information or pending release, except information that is available through Massachusetts Public Records. Prohibiting the sharing of more information with ICE than immigration or citizenship status is a valid limitation of this ordinance. So basically, what this is saying is that we can share immigration and citizenship status with ICE, we're not sharing anything else. Deputizing of local officials. No city official shall perform the functions of an immigration officer whether pursuant to Eight U.S.C. Section thirteen fifty-seven G or any other law, regulation, or policy, whether formal or informal. Again, the federal government cannot force state and local actors to enforce federal law. The ordinance's provision prohibiting city officials from voluntarily participating in federal immigration enforcement is valid. So then there was a question, and we talked about this last year, about our authority as a city council to enact this ordinance. And so, on that question, Mr. Tanner, it's a very lengthy opinion on this. He cites some precedent and some other court cases, but I distilled it down to, to this end, a plain reading of the city's ordinances makes it clear that there are numerous ordinances in place which control in more minute detail than the proposed ordinance, the conduct of city agencies, including the police department. Similar municipalities with strong mayoral forms of government, such as Newton and Boston, have adopted similar ordinances without opposition. So in summary, which I know you're all happy to see that slide, in summary, this ordinance reaffirms East Hampton's commitment to being a welcoming city for all. This aligns to the concept of community policing by building trust and respect between police and communities. It doesn't remove the fear from undocumented immigrants completely, but in East Hampton, they will know that the city and this municipal government will not participate in gratuitous immigration inquiries. This welcoming city ordinance does not interfere with, but reaffirms law enforcement's ability to arrest and hold individuals guilty of criminal offenses regardless of immigration status. So again, if you commit a crime, the fact that you are documented or undocumented will not matter, because that will then become a police matter, and it's not part of this ordinance. So, I also have a page of references, just so you know, I actually did some homework. I also, I'm going to just segue over here real quick, because I want to get a piece of paper. So, I'm going to have Counselor Gomez come up and read some things, but first, before we get there, I want to thank the East Hampton Community Coalition. You guys are unbelievable. They are as committed to this town as anybody. We're lucky to have you, and I appreciate all the work you've done on this. Specifically, want to call out Kay Collins, Eli Damon, Carolyn Cushing, Andrea Stone, Mary Ann Sarah, and so many more. My email box has never been so full, as in conversations I have with them. I also want to thank Jeff Napolitano from the, who's the Executive Director of the Resistance Center for Peace and Justice, members of the ACLU who have helped us work through this, the Springfield City Council for laying the groundwork, and all those residents of East Hampton who have continued to encourage and support this effort for the past two-plus years. So thank you all. I'll now turn it over to Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Counselor Coniff. Good evening to everybody, and thank you to being here. Please keep coming to our meeting, because I think this is, this is amazing, having people in our meeting. Please keep coming. I'm going to read some, I'm going to read a letter, I'm going to read a few emails, I'm going to read, the emails are from some counselors, and I'm going to read part of some emails that people are supporting these ordinance. I'm going to start with a letter. To East Hampton City Council and residents, we want to extend our appreciation to the people of East Hampton who support the adoption of the welcoming community trust ordinance. This ordinance, the ordinance will help ensure that the civil rights of all resident of the community are protected, and the individuals are not discriminated against it based on what they look like or where they come from. The passage of this ordinance will strengthen your community commitment to keeping families together and change public safety and support the rights of workers. We proudly represent and reside in communities that have passed similar measures and can attend to the importance particularly in times of division or restating and codifying our support for all people. None of us have witnesses, witnessed, and any negative consequences with our city and town from the adoption of this type of legislation. At this moment of history, small gestures of our shared humanity, even within the small confines of city councils meeting reverberate across the state, the country, and the world. We look forward to East Hampton joining the rank of community that codify the commitment to protecting their residents. And this letter is signed by the Holyoke of Mayor, the Mayor of Holyoke, Alex Morse, Alisa F. Klein, Northampton City Council, Jesse Letterman, Springfield City Council, Adam Gomez, Springfield City Council, Catherine Golub, Greenfield Resident and Immigration Advocate, anderson Conway, by law petitioner. From a few constituents, from Daniel Ritchie, part of the email that he sent, he said, "I support this ordinance because I believe it helps ensure that we have a safer city for all who live in, visit, or pass through it. I want to have confidence that our city employees will respect the human rights of all, whether citizens or no citizens." From Lauren, "I think that all of us accept the moral wisdom of codifying the current work of our police, our police chief and his force. I hope that now that our city solicitor has support the legality, the legality of the wording of this ordinance vis a vis, the concern about a mayor's strong city, you will be bold for this. Affirmation of our city commitment to equal rights and equal protection for all our residents." I emailed from City Council Dan Rist to my colleagues. I write this statement in support of the welcoming ordinance before this evening, and it dispels of any thought that somehow I did not want this type of ordinance passed. I have always believed in the intent of the ordinance, which to me is meant to codify our own resolution against hate and discrimination. My opposition to the former was purely procedural. If you will be, if you will, as I did not feel will, should pass an ordinance such as this without the support of the city attorney, as I will make this law on first of all. The new ordinance clearly has the city attorney blessing, and I must say how much I appreciate, I appreciate his review, and it was indeed through a very well researched, so it will be hard to dispute its conclusion in court. Also, the ordinance has the chief of police support, and it will be no affect the police department operation in any way, and closely follows the department's own immigration policy. My concerns moving forward is whether it will be emboldening the few vocal haters in our city that want to act on their own as a vigilance for ICE, but I do trust that our police department will not tolerate this type of actions. Also, I asked the committee and the mayor if in this evening need that they expound on how the ordinance will be enforced and what mayoral policies will be in place following in passage. I look forward to watching the meeting and getting some answers. In short, I'm indeed unhappy that I can't be there to vote in favor of this ordinance, and I'm strongly advise my colleague to pass this ordinance this evening. Sensually, Dan Rist. I have another email from Counselor Derby, he's the Vice President of the City Council. After legally review of the welcoming community ordinance by Ordinance Subcommittee and seven public hearing, I have determined that this ordinance should be adopted by the city of East Hampton. Throughout our process, we did not see any reason why we should not adopt an ordinance that support and solidify the current policy of the city. As Chief Albert said, the East Hampton Police firmly believe in community policing and what everyone to feel safe reporting if they have been a victim of crime. Recently, there have been many news reports of people being trafficked against their will. This is exactly the type of crime that might go on reporter if the victim have any immigration status that is unclear. Passing this ordinance send a message to the East Hampton, sending a message, send a message that East Hampton wants to help victims, no matter who they are, and will continue to prosecute crimes that happen in our community. Thank you for your consideration, Selene Derby, Chair of Ordinance Subcommittee, Vice President of East Hampton Street Council. Now my statement. Today, at lunch, I saw one of my friends, and after we exchanged hellos and say hi, he said to me, "Really? A sanitary city?" My first question to him was, "Do you read the ordinance?" He responded again, saying, saying to me, "A sanitary city?" And again, I respond him with a question, "Do you read the ordinance?" He said, "No." So I told him to please read it. It's not a sanitary city, it's a welcoming trust ordinance. I want everybody to feel safer in our city, and I want everyone to feel safe in our city. I gave him an example, because his mom have an accent, he grew up in a different country. And I told him if there was right, if someone for, one of their city employees asked his mom if she, if someone is doing an inspection in her house, if there was right for the city employee to ask her status. And of course, he said, "No." He said, "No, that's not right." And I told him, so this is what we're looking for with this ordinance. Esta ordenanza es para hacer más segura esta ciudad. Si, más segura. Como puede ser más segura una ciudad pidiéndole a los empleados que no actúen como agentes federales? Lo único que estamos pidiendo en esta ordenanza es que los empleados municipales no actúan como agentes federales, y que para eso no han sido contratados. Con esta ordenanza le damos la oportunidad a los que no tienen documento a sentirse libres para delatar cualquier abuso o crimen que se haga en contra de ellos o en contra de cualquier residente de East Hampton, documentado o no documentado. Que estén nuestra ciudad sin sentirse intimidados por nuestros empleados municipales. Esta ordenanza no es para proteger ningún criminal. Nuestra policía actuará en contra del que cometa cualquier crimen, que quede eso claro. Para aquellos que se fueron del lugar donde nacieron y que vinieron a un país que no es el de ellos, para ustedes siéntanse bienvenidos en nuestra comunidad. Para aquellos que no tienen documentos y que son criminales, sepan que aquí no hay espacio para ustedes. La policía lo va a tratar como lo que son, criminales. Ahora, aquellos que por una u otra razón no tienen documentos, siéntanse en la libertad de reportar cualquier crimen, sea hacia ustedes o hacia cualquier otra persona. A los empleados de East Hampton hagan el trabajo por el cual se les contrató, que los federales harán el de ellos. With this ordinance, we give the opportunity to those who don't have documents to feel free to report any abuse or crime that is done against them, or any documented resident who is in our city. They can do this without feeling intimidated or afraid by our municipal employees, and I believe that is how we can make the city safer. It will take away the fears and will let anyone to feel free to report a crime. I would like to make something very clear, this ordinance is not to protect any criminal. Our police will take action against anyone who commit a crime. For those who left the place where they were born and to come to another country to find a better life and safety, we welcome you. For those who came here to just create crime and cause harm, there is no place for you here. Any undocumented individual who is not feeling safe or seeing something that is wrong, we don't want you to hesitate to report the crime or keep yourself and family safe. Dear city councils, I'm asking you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
So, before we start public speak, I have been reminded that I am remiss, as I so often am, that I want to thank the mayor, the police chief, and certainly the Personnel Director, Jane, not because you support it, because I know you do, but because you challenged me and made me do my homework, and for that, I thank you. Now, I will open it up to, do we open it up to the public?
First, so anyone from the city, the mayor, chief of police, anyone would like to make any comments, and then we'll open it up to the public?
Two minutes. Nothing more. Good evening, again. I would, you know, speaking to this ordinance, you know, my first clear statement is I support the ordinance and would urge city councilors to vote in favor, and I appreciate Counselor Rist and Counselor Derby for putting on the public record, even though they couldn't be with us. Would also like to thank and definitely acknowledge the remarkable work that the city council has done in considering this issue, but Counselor Gomez and Counselor Coniff for really going above and beyond. To those who have been involved with this ordinance and the many permutations before this ordinance, I would congratulate you and let you know I have dear admiration for your present, you know, for, I can't even say the word. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Over years, I mean, over years, and putting the work in and the research, and certainly educating me. I have great perso- I have great personal pride as, as a person living at East Hampton, but more certainly the mayor of this city, that the issue was addressed over and over again, not only with changes in our, changes in our community, but also changes in our law across the state and nationally, that, that we all kept at it, and this is before us now. The policies that would be directly or remotely affected by this ordinance have been reviewed, some have been updated, and just as a general practice, we will start posting all personnel prior policies on our website, including those which have, have changed, which were actually very few. And I, I credit our personnel director, Jane, for working so diligently and very quickly because I thought this vote was happening in August. But I'm glad it's happening now. Lastly, I just wanna, there are two things that I struggle with in our public conversation. One, that, that when somebody is introduced or they introduce themselves, almost the first thing they say after the name is how many years they have lived in East Hampton. And, and this ordinance really just takes that out of the equation. Well, it's wonderful that people move to East Hampton, and I would encourage more people to do that, and I really admire and appreciate and respect families who have been here for generations and have lived nowhere else in their life. I find that not relevant to what kind of participant they can be in public dialogue and also in our government, and I think that this welcoming community, really, the ordinance speaks to that. The second thing that I've noticed a lot in our desire to be a better city is the word welcoming and what that means. I will say tonight, and I have said before, most recently in my State of the City, saying welcoming over and over again doesn't really make a place welcoming, and we have dark shadows and pockets of fear in our community that are counter to being welcoming, and this ordinance, I think, is a sound step and a good way publicly to say, "We're gonna work on being welcoming." And it might not be comfortable conversations, and it might be scary, and it might even feel threatening, but it's a conversation that this city is not backing away from, and I think the creation of the Community Relations Committee and the work done by this counselor, this council, as well as recognition of pride this year are tremendous forward steps, and I look forward to working on this issue with the council and with the public going forward. So with that, I will allow comment for other public officials.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, would you like to add any comments?
Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. Bob Alberti, Chief of Police here in East Hampton. I'm one of the ones that was at this podium three, two, three years ago now, when this same type of discussion started. My position hasn't changed, the police department's position hasn't changed. For us, it's about criminal law. If you come here to commit crimes, I don't care where you're from, I said it a thousand times, if you're from Mars, we're gonna deal with you accordingly. So for us, it's really, our policies have been in place. I've had the opportunity to work with the council on this ordinance. We've had some back and forths, and as much as Counsel Coniff was taken to task by me, she has definitely taken me to task. But I think by way of just some dates, I think it's important that, to what Counsel Gomez had alluded to about reporting to the police department, any crime, if you're a victim or a witness of any crime, we've had a U visa, U visa policy in place which covers protecting immigrants since 2014. The LUN decision was in 2017. My immigration policy, which I strongly recommend, if anybody wants a copy of, they'll happily leave it, we did this back in May of 2018, and the ordinance mirrors pretty much our daily operations, how we, how we operate along the lines of immigration now. So for some that may be naysayers, I would say that this ordinance is not gonna change the way that we do business. It actually mirrors quite a bit of our existing policies and, and in the way that we do business. And a lot of it is driven by both federal and state law, particularly state law and, and the SJC LUN decision, which really dictates what we can and can't do with regard to immigration. So I'm happy to support this. We worked long and hard on it, and it's been a long road to get to where we are now, and I'm here to entertain any questions from anybody.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for the chief that's up here? Okay. Thank you very much. I think we've gone through city officials, so now we'll open up to the public, so if anyone from the public would like to address this, again, just for the record, please state your name and address, and because there are so many here, if you could try to keep it to two minutes, that'd be appropriate. Thank you.
Or less, or less. Good evening. My name is Kay Collins. I live at 4 Carroll Ave., East Hampton. I am here tonight both as a city resident and a member of the East Hampton Community Coalition to voice support for the Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance. Peg, you stole my thunder with that shout out and the thank yous a little bit, but the ECC would like to also thank councilors Gomez and Coniff for their hard work in crafting an ordinance that is a good fit for our community, the city solicitor for his opinion on the legality of that ordinance, each and every city councillor that has sat down with us over the last very long two and a half years to hear our thoughts and to ask thoughtful questions in return. We would like to thank Mayor LaChapelle and Chief Alberti for many conversations they've had with us, Bill Newman of the ACLU, Jeff Napolitano of the Resistance Center, and the staff of the Resistance Center, and all of the many community members who signed petitions and voiced their support, and honestly, anybody that spoke passionately on the issue, whatever side you might have been on. The issues with immigration law in this country are not going to be solved in the city council chambers of East Hampton, Massachusetts. What we are asking to do here is to spread the message that all members of our community are valuable, that we want all members of our community to be able to contribute to the health and safety of East Hampton by being able to report crimes and go about the everyday business of life without being reported to ICE despite committing no crime. What we are doing with this ordinance is taking a small step to make a statement in support of those who authorized or not authorized are living in fear in our community. The reality is that there are people who live, work, raise children, and pay taxes in the city who walk in fear every single day. In 2018, our mayor and police chief were looking to the state to pass legislation which would render local legislation a moot point, but as we know, that did not happen. The current ordinance does not single out the police department, it has instead broadened its scope to apply equally to all city employees, so that not only can community members securely report crime, but they can speak to any city agency without fear of being reported to ICE simply for, say, attending a parent-teacher conference or pulling a permit. Speakers in the past, and Chief Alberti just now, have referenced the LUN decision as rendering an ordinance unnecessary, although you didn't say it was unnecessary, thank you for that. That decision applies only to law enforcement, whereas this ordinance will apply more broadly. You might ask, but how does this really relate to East Hampton? I will say this, every small step we take to stand up as a community, one community after the other, to state that we welcome and value all people is a step away from rhetoric that encourages violence and hate. I love this city and all of its inhabitants. I'm not calling anyone out simply for having questioned this ordinance, what I am calling out is the resistance to change. Two and a half years ago, I addressed the city council and I asked, "What side of history do we wanna be on?" Councilors, I am confident that you will vote for what is right, just, and inclusive for our community tonight, and let that reflect the answer for East Hampton. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Now is the time? I didn't mean to be over anxious here. I, I am Bill Newman, and I am the Director of the Western Mass ACLU office, and I, I'm really moved by this meeting tonight, and what the chief has said, and what the councilors have said, and what the councilors who aren't here have said. It's just been a moving moment of community, and I, I think we should note that. It's really quite extraordinary. I, I, my office is a regional office for the four western counties of Massachusetts. East Hampton's obviously an important part of the area with which, in which we work, and to be here and to hear the chief and the mayor and the councilors and the community speak as one in favor of equality and fairness and due process, it's really moving. These are essential values, and for a community to come together and say, "And they are our values, and we are going to affirm them, and we are going to live by them," I think is really quite an extraordinary moment. The Massachusetts Constitution, in the first part of the first article, says this, "All persons are born free and equal and have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of enjoying and defending their lives and liberties, that of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property in fine, that of seeking and obtaining their safety and happiness. Equality under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of sex, race, color, creed, or national origin." The Massachusetts Constitution, of course, was the basis for the federal constitution, which in the Fourteenth Amendment did say, and finally adopted what we had said a century before or close to it, "No state shall deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." This is a moment in which I think East Hampton can take its place in part of the proudest history of the state and the country. This is a moment tonight in which East Hampton and its residents and elected officials and its city officials and its citizenry and all of its residents, and particularly this council, I think, can take great pride, and I thank you.
Hi, my name is Laurel Gardner. I live on Plain Street, and I just wanna say how thankful I am that everybody here cared enough about this to come here tonight, and I certainly look forward to a unanimous yes vote. That is my hope, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Valencourt, 15 Cottage Street. I wanna send a Facebook post tonight that says, "I live in a community that approved a welcoming community ordinance." So, please.
Hi, my name is Jason Montgomery. I live at 107 Ferry Street. When I got here tonight, they asked me if I would speak in rebuttal to voices that rose up against this ordinance. Guess I'm not doing that. I decided to stand up and speak. I was born and raised in El Centro, California, a mile from the US-Mexico border. My grandmother Gomez walked 2,000 miles from Chihuahua, Mexico, to the United States, and from her journey, generations have spawned that have made the United States our home and have succeeded, and we did not do that because she was exceptional, we did it because we were met by an exceptional people. She lived undocumented because that was the time. The fear that we live under right now is a relatively new thing. I watched the wall come up in my hometown. I watched as a community that we considered ourselves to be a suburb of Mexicali became the other in the eyes of a nation for no reason. This didn't start now. This began years ago with programs like Operation Gatekeeper, but what has happened now seems to be a step towards a ferocity that I cannot understand. I have seen personally what happens when people are forced to live in the shadows for fear that their documentation status will be used against them. You don't end up with a safer community, you end up with a more vulnerable population. You end up with those who were no longer human in the eyes of a community. And I came to East Hampton because I believe this is a place that would never morally allow that to happen. Plus, it's a cool town. I remember I sat at a community meeting once and, and, and raised the question, "If you're going to speak for us and for my people in particular, where I come from, who I come from, then you better be willing to do something." Because talk is talk. This is doing something. This is saying, "No. If you live here, if you are a member of our community, if you are a member of, of us, you have the rights and protections that we afford to anyone, because we are human first above all." So, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak to this?
Hi. My name is Javier Luengo. I'm the coordinator of the Immigrant Protection Project of the ACLU, and Bill Newman is my It has come a time now that we're the ones who get the call when somebody gets detained by ICE. We get the call when somebody gets detained by local police and handled twice. We're the ones who are going to the Franklin County Jail to try to get people out of detention. These kind of ordinances that we, we have crafted in Springfield and other cities are a step forward to work in our humanity, to work in what needs to happen, because it's not happening at a national level. I wanna say thank you to the council. I wanna say thank you to Omar Gomez, to Peg. I wanna say thank you to each of you for considering this, for doing it, and thanks to the city for the support. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? I would, no, I would like to kinda echo what Kay has said earlier, that, you know, she, we truly do love and respect everyone's opinions, and so if there's someone here who would like to speak against us, I would please feel comfortable to say your opinion. That's what we're here for, is what democracy is about, so please do, this is the opportunity, 'cause if there isn't anyone, then I feel pretty confident we should move on and move this question, but if there is somebody here who would like to speak against us, really, this is what democracy is about, so please take advantage of it. Okay. Counsel Gardner.
I would.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Seconds from a clean getaway. I just wanna say thank you for all your work. Muchas gracias para, por todo trabajo para esta ordenanza que va a ayudarnos vivir más seguro y para vivir más las valores de la ciudad. I just thank you, Peg and Omar, and all the city councilors and all the subcommittees that have taken this up, and it's very thorough, and I thank you, and I enjoyed hearing Spanish, and thank you for listening to my broken Spanish.
I move to amend the city ordinances with the addition of a new Chapter 13 entitled, "Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance as Made Available for This Meeting."
Second. Okay, a motion of second for the, to approve the Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance as presented. Additional counsel questions? Counsel, may I start Counsel Kuzinski first?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me congratulate everyone who's in this room in support of this ordinance for the diligence with which you all have worked. I was there two and a half years ago when you first started. Many of us were. You deserve that congratulations, and I think over time, you've brought great light. And I think, over time, you've brought great light to many of the issues in our society and in our city, and helped to foster a good discussion on these matters. And I believe for the benefit of all. That being said, I'd also like to thank our city officials and also to thank Mr. Newman for being here and for giving us the wisdom of the Massachusetts and the U.S. Constitution. Equal protection under the law is not just for citizens. It's equal protection under the law for everyone in our country. And I would hope that would be for every country in the world when we go and visit places. I speak in support of the welcoming community trust ordinance and believe that this council has the authority to pass this type of ordinance. I always did believe in that, and when we held our vote, I voted in favor, directing city officials to conduct the city's business in a fair and even-handed manner. I didn't see the city attorney's approval as a necessary ingredient to making that determination. As a council and as councilors, we each have that responsibility and authority to make those decisions, and if there be challenges, there be challenges. But that's for the right of the people in the legislative body to make those decisions. In fact, the city attorney is currently utilized by the executive, doesn't offer the council the same access to legal opinions, legal consultation. And I have an issue with that, and I'm free to say that, and the council president has heard me on this subject. I think it's important to have a well-balanced legislative and administrative responsibilities. And that requires, in my opinion, access to good legal advice, legal consultation. And I would like to see a budget line item for the council to have that provision available. Right now, we do not. Regarding the proposed ordinance, it is fair. It has the support of the chief of police, codifies the current policies, and will enhance the safety of all persons within our city. The chief assures us that his department will pursue those who are criminals or who have committed a crime. The city will be spending its resources on protecting everyone who lives in as well as visits our city, and will offer an opportunity for all who are within our borders to be We welcome with open arms those who come to us and let us work together to build a better future for all. I say it's now time to approve this ordinance because it's fair and humane, and it will help us all to improve.
Okay. Counselor, do I see your hand?
You do.
Oh, gotcha.
As the third member of the ordinance subcommittee who oversaw the discussion of this in subcommittee, and I just wanted to speak briefly, because I think, for the most part, I agree with all the commentary that's been made here, certainly following up on what my colleague, Counselor Kozinski, just said, and, and to all those that were gathered here today. I, I think that, to some degree, the welcoming community trust ordinance could also be considered an ordinance trusting a city to welcome safety, because I think at the root of this, the intention here is to make sure that every, all of our residents are safe in the city in regards to allowing people to, who are witness or are victims of crimes, to report crimes safely without fear of repercussion because of their immigration status. I know that this is a Herculean undertaking, and I want to particularly thank my counselor, my counselor colleagues, Counselor Coniff and Counselor Gomez. I want to particularly commend Counselor Gomez on his choice of fashion.[870.63][870.63](laughing) I think the ECC has done an amazing job supporting and providing information, as has Attorney Newman, who has, I think, to some degree, been very valuable to our city and our city council in regards to helping with legal information, as has been Solicitor Tanner in this, in this process. Certainly, I do not think that any of this would move forward if we didn't already have language that was parallel to most of this ordinance within our police department. And I think oftentimes, in other parts of the country, we would not be so fortunate as to have a police department that kind of really gets human rights and how to treat people in general. And so, I'm very thankful for our chief of police, who worked very closely with everyone involved with this, and both in terms of recommending language and guidance. I think we all know what it's like as citizens of the United States to be in situations where we often feel outsiders and marginalized, and to be in situations, even with some of the entitlements that we have, to be afraid to ask questions. And I'd say that I, I can't even fathom what it's like to be someone who lives in constant fear of being rounded up by ICE or witnessing, or more, more so witnessing crimes and not being able to report it to the police because they're afraid that they're going to be carted off to jail. I think that Mr. Montgomery made some very poignant remarks, and especially, I appreciate the story he shared. We all have to remember that, at one point, we were all immigrants. We were all strangers in a strange land. And I think that, I'll add that, as, and all my colleagues know, I typically am someone who likes to follow rules. So, when this was put forward, I had lots of questions as to the legality, and I think that Counselor Coniff did an exceptional job presenting the legal ramifications and the legal framework around this to really illustrate to people that this, there is, and with, Mr. Tanner's opinion, that we're operating within the laws of our land here. I think this is a good opportunity, as the neigh, as the mayor kind of mentioned, to focus on how we want to be as humans, and to focus on how we could be more welcoming, and as opposed to figure out ways to keep our neighbor out, to figure out ways that we can love our neighbor more. So, thanks again, and I think you could probably tell I'm clearly in support of this as well.[1032.75][1032.75](laughing) So, again, thank you for the work that you two did and everyone who supported this, and this is, I'm, I'm proud to live in East Hampton and proud to be someone up here who gets to assist in making these decisions. So, thank you.
Any additional? Counselor Peake?
I'll, I'll be quick, but, um, so, I wasn't actually going to say anything, but, so, two years ago, basically right now, I was making my decision about whether or not to run for this job that I'm now lucky enough to have. And this issue was in the press, and it was on the community forums, and it was a big thing that people talked about when I was knocking doors. And I had some people in, people that were close to me, people who were advising me on these things, say to me straight up, like, "I know that this is something that you think is right. I know this is something that you believe should happen, but just drop it. It's never going to happen." The, the people said that. They were like, "This is, it's dead on arrival, the way that this has been set up, with, with everything that's gone down, it's, it, you know, it's a nice idea, it'll never happen." And the fact that, two years later, we're sitting here today is, is a pretty impressive thing, and it's a thing that I don't think was inevitable. And so, I, I don't, I, we all, we have a lot to get to tonight, and I, I'm nervous about spending too much time, you know, slapping each other on the back, but, you know, I'll, I'll just say this, like, the, the way that the city council is set up, where they break up workloads, we can't all be involved in everything. And I, looking at this tonight, I'm sort of kicking myself for not being more involved in this process as it was going along. We, you know, I was, I've been focusing on some other stuff, and some of this, I'm seeing in its final form tonight. You, you know, Counselor Coniff and Counselor Gomez, you've done a fantastic job on this. And you did that job with the help of our executive branch, with the help of, of, of our police, with the help of the ECC. And this, this sort of collaborative, multi-year effort is just astounding in the, just the, the sheer amount of work that needed to be done, and the, just the, the quality of the final product is astounding to me. And I'm very, very happy with how this comes, and I'm proud to call you all colleagues. So, thank you very much.
Counselor Lynch.
Might as well, right?[1189.13][1189.13](laughing) So, I just want to say thanks, you know, PEG and Omar, for bringing this to light. Peg, as well. The hours you and I spent going back and forth. Just in case everybody wants to know, I come from a law-abiding family. My dad was a cop, and when I see the words "warrant," what do you mean? We're not going to hold somebody on a warrant? And I spent hours with Ami over coffee. We had a lot of coffee and discussed this, and, and the separation between civil and criminal and, and everything else, and I got really educated around this. And Chief Alberti seemed to, you know, reaffirming that if we hold somebody on a ICE detainer warrant, it's actually kidnapping, in essence. So, if the officers do that, they can actually be charged. So, that brought, brought it to light to me and, and really showed what the right thing to do. So, to everybody that sat down with me for the hours on end, Peg, you know, thank you and, and educating me. I was all for it from the start, but I wanted to make sure that what we did was the right way to do it, and that it wasn't going to put the city in jeopardy or in, in any kind of legal issues and concerns. So, thank you for your time, everybody in the community and Peg. And anytime anybody wants coffee with a counselor, I'm the guy.[1272.01][1272.01](laughing) Thank you.
Okay. I just have a few words to say. No, I'm just kidding.[1278.51][1278.51](laughing) No. No, but really, I, I thank everybody, the councilors, everything I said, I, you know, I agree. It's just, it's been a wonderful transformation. I'm, I'm glad to be part of it. I, I have similar issues to what Counselor Riss was saying. We had, it was never a doubt about the, the morality of what should be done, but the, a procedural thing. So, I'm glad the persistence of ECC has, has helped all get there. So, we have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I'll just take like a, maybe a two-minute recess so the crowd can clear. Again, you're welcome to stay for the rest, but if you don't, you can just...
Hi, Jen. Your statement...
You want me to send you? I can send you electronic, like, tonight. I can send that.
I was thinking the same thing.
I can send it to you, everything. Yeah, I will send it.
The person who shot you.
Okay.
I'm on my way down the terrace, and I'm on my phone.
Yes.
Me too. I don't wipe it.
Thank you, George.
I love what you said.
Oh, gosh. Did I keep this straight in our face?
I, no, oh, my God.[1361.11][1361.11](laughing)
I would just have a little fun.
I just got called anywhere. Whatever.
How long does this take?
Well, unless we're cheap.
Let's see.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you. It's my corporate application.
I wonder if we get to go for a break. You need, I'm there, right now.[1376.11][1376.11](laughing)
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You do lots. Lots and lots. Stick with that, Christina.
So, Bill, you're only the next public here?
Sure.
Thanks, Mary.
The next one is yours, right?
Yeah, $15,000 from the reserve fund to be transferred to school and city.
It's all down there.
Medicare.
It's going to supplement the Medicare budget.
You didn't let the rest of us know.
Yeah.
I am embarrassed.
It's $15,000.
Yeah, really bothered to get lost in there.
Okay, I think we can start on with the meeting now, so we'll end the recess. We're still in public hearings, we're going to do. If we could have a little quiet for a minute. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Anyway, so going on. Excuse me. Yes, thank you. So, we're starting again. So, we're now in finance. Counselor Lynch will be doing the interdepartmental transfer.
So, there's an interdepartmental transfer for $15,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund to supplement Medicare budget. It did pass three to zero in the subcommittee, and it basically was just to finish off the end of the year for the wage increases. And obviously, Medicare is a percent of the wage increase, or the, the salaries. So, as they went up, so did the Medicare expense.
Is there anyone from the city? The mayor? Anyone else would like to address this appropriation?
Counselor Lynch did a great job summarizing why the ask is, and I would support his statement. Yes, and I'm not sure, our auditor Val Bernier is here. I'm not sure if she has comments to this issue, or if you have anything technical. Val's here to answer those questions.
I don't think we do, but if we do, anyone from the public who would like to address the council on this appropriation? Anyone from the council have any questions for the city auditor concerning this appropriation? I don't think, okay, Counselor Lynch, I'll entertain a motion then.
All right. Make a motion to take $15,000 to be transferred from reserve fund. $15,000 to be transferred to school, $7,000. The city, $8,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes: to supplement the Medicare budget.
Second. Okay, motion of second to approve $15,000 departmental transfer. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Okay. Now, we have several of our property. Counselor Kozinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have before us a proposed swap of property or a proposed transfer of property. Tonight's subject is the entrance to the city's new pre-K through eight school, and is a land acquisition which will allow for a roundabout. Now, I know the mayor does not have, have to involve city councilors as she considers negotiations. That doesn't mean that she couldn't, or that she shouldn't. I believe it would have been quite appropriate, transparent and collaborative, if the property subcommittee had been invited to have early input into the discussions around this matter. I am uncomfortable with the Williston appraisal, and I would have liked to see the city do its own appraisal. I hope that in the future, we can make, be more collaborative and work together to make the best deals possible for the city of East Hampton, all its citizens, and all its organizations within the community. The proposal before us calls for the swap of Brewster for land needed to build the roundabout, 14,267 square feet. The mayor has made very clear that we have no time for any other proposals or ideas to be considered, that this council must decide tonight, either to support this school project and approve the swap, or vote it down. From my position, given as these are the only choices, I will certainly vote for the proposal. The subcommittee has recommended that we do so, three to zero. And if anyone from the city would like to discuss this, I would be happy to move forward, either the mayor or Mr. Bag or the city attorney, to present the position.
I'll start with comment. I know city planner Bag probably has a comment as, as well. I, I would like to go back to Counselor Kozinski's comment around access to city attorney. I find that actually disrespectful of the role of city council president, who works very well with the mayor's office, current administration... and how it should go forward. I think that a line item for a city council attorney would prove actually more controversial and also adversarial. To your point of working together, I do believe that that request is the exact opposite of that. To go to your current comment on the process, it is my job as the executive to bring to city council a request to vote on, to vote to acquire by exchange a portion of a parcel on 198. It is for the executive branch to decide what is best in the administration, but also negotiation. The collaboration and sharing of information during this process has been voluminous, and has certainly affected many trees across the country. I do that out of my commitment to transparency and accessibility to government. I also well-recognize that the information that I give is supplementary to what I'm asking you to do, which is to give me the authority to acquire by exchange a swap of land. I don't find it within the legislative branch for them to negotiate or to ask for alternative proposals after the proposals have been thoroughly examined. As far as the timeline of this request, this is a topic that has been discussed in public meeting of the school building committee for some time of how we might acquire the land. MSBA and myself, along with representation from the school building committee, had a long back-and-forth around total control and access to the property. And thought, when looking at the two driveways currently there, that those would go away, or they were not owned by the city. Why that's important, that is our total control access to the project. The roundabout is an ad alternate, but we still have to have total control and access of all land for the project and the ad alts. That is a requirement of MSBA. There's a possibility that the price of the roundabout will make it not feasible. I don't know. I'm not super happy about coming to you, or even as an executive, to ask to acquire a piece of land we might not need. But I will tell you, I feel very firmly that it is in the best interest of this city and this project, that the land is acquired by exchange, rather than city funds being expended for a small piece of property that we may not need. I also think that the exchange with the Williston school is one that benefits the community. Brewster Avenue is an expense to maintain, and the expense far exceeds the money in Chapter 90 that we would lose. I think there's a safety, I think that there's a safety component both for the community and for Williston, their students. I will take full note of the animosity between the city and Williston over the years. But the reality is, the economic impact of this school has really been a main driver of why East Hampton exists. Yes, it's confounding that they don't pay taxes on land. That has been, though, a longstanding tradition in our country, and our state, and in this city, and there are alternative benefits. And I take offense to have to defend the permission to acquire this by exchange that is somewhat based on the dislike of Williston, or what Williston should be giving to the community. That said, I would like to have city planner Bag to just walk through some of the details, absent questions from me directly.
Do you have a question for it, Rick?
I think it's important to note that, I think, in looking at this, we've tried very hard to take a very fair approach, and to be sure that whatever is done is in the best interest of the city. And I think a lot of the questions have to do with value. And I know Counselor Peak asked me about value when we looked at the, in subcommittee, about the appraisal. An appraisal which was handed to us at the property subcommittee meeting that night, six o'clock, for review. It had been submitted by Williston to the city on April 22nd, I believe, in a letter from Mr. McCullough. It would have been helpful to be able to look at that sooner. It would have been helpful to be, because there are lots of questions about it, which I won't get into this evening. But I was, to answer your question, I have some very serious concerns about the appraisal and its value, which I wasn't able to express at our subcommittee meeting, because we were in the middle of the meeting and couldn't evaluate the appraisal. In any case, I just wanted to be sure we put that on the record.
If I may respond.
It has to do with value. It has nothing to do with Williston as an organization. I think Williston keeps some of the best property, has been an economic driver of our community, and I would hope that every counselor would keep a well-balanced approach in evaluating whatever organization comes before our community.
Okay, I have the mayor make a quick rebuttal, and then we need to move on to another.
As far as appraisals being given to the subcommittee, but also requests for further information from councilors, I will say some of it was already in the packet, but also I look at the appraisals and the value, and the request, and the examination, and the level of scrutiny offensive to the executive branch of government. I feel the questioning that happened at that subcommittee was an indication that you feel I will not negotiate in good faith and on the best interest of the city. Your questioning of the value or those exchanged, and the professionals that have done that work, is something for consideration of the executive branch in negotiation. My request of the council is for your opinion on the value or structure of the exchange. My request is for you to say yes, I may enter into this negotiations and to structure a deal that overall benefits the city and the school project. Thank you.
If I may, for the mayor's benefit, I would like her to note.
Let's move on. Counselor Bag, I mean Counselor Bag, uh, Jeff, city planner Bag.
Counselor Bag.
There is an opening.
I'm going to try what Counselor Connaught did with the technology, because I like to try to torture myself.
On your cellphone. Oh, my gosh. That is really cool.
So I was just hoping to offer some context, and I'm sure there are questions that can be asked that I won't be able to answer, but I think there's some people who can try. What I have, you know, to review is, starting with the council packet that got submitted in mid-June. I think part of the pace that seems like is happening has to do, in small part, with the summer schedule of the council. So if not tonight, you know, the next opportunity was August 6th meeting. And if something was not, you know, certain at that meeting, it would kick all the way to September. And so I think this, along with the EV charging stations, is another effort to just try to be as quick and nimble as possible. So I think that's challenging. It required the special meeting in June to get this meeting for tonight. I think, I am not an expert in the valuation. I think that there is, there has been raised some questions about the value of the land, which I think, you know, it comes through appraisals. I think that there is a corresponding cost. So there may be value to land, but there may be costs involved that we haven't really fully explored. So, you know, there are three, there are three real options to potentially acquire the parcel on Park Street. It's purchase, it's this exchange option, or it's a taking. And so I think some of the discussions that I have been involved with are that there's really not an option to just purchase the land, and that's not on the table, to just offer some money to purchase it. So the exchange, I understand, came up as a concept. The final would be a taking, in which case there would be some additional significant costs to trying to just take the property. So I think the exchange discussion is of value to the city, because this has to do with the school. The roundabout will provide access to a large number of people. So for perspective, I don't know, you know, the roundabout plans are not really widely seen at this point yet, but I do have, hopefully, an image to show if this is mirroring like it should be. Again, this goes to sort of the, giving some context and perspective on what we're talking about. Interestingly, the images are up, but they're not moving, corresponding.
22 percent, they're right up.
What the image shows is the location of the roundabout at the top of what we all know as Whitebrook. I think it's important to note that, you know, from some perspective, the land is not just unutilized, vacant, and never to be developed as anything. But the image that the councilors have in their packet is that Williston has, two years ago, secured a special permit for a solar array. So I wish the image would show, I may try to reboot this. But I think it's important to just capture the context which this is happening under. And it's not going to work. So the councilors have that imagery. What I think is also important is just taking a look at the Brewster Ave information. And I think the mayor had had some information that I think, maybe I would even defer back to her, about who has seen this and who has commented thus far. So in addition to the city council property subcommittee, the chief of police has reviewed the proposal for discontinuance of Brewster. The fire department, DPW, have also looked at the discontinuance of Brewster Ave. And the planning board, by statute, has had a meeting to discuss, sort of from their perspective, if the loss of Brewster Ave as a public way had had some significance. And so there was a memo provided to the council from the planning board, which identified a couple of issues that should be identified or reviewed. So all of that has taken place and led us to the meeting tonight. I think I would maybe defer to Chief Alberti to comment on, I mean, I think that's what we're talking about, is we're talking about, if the imagery, I'll try to work on it while Chief Alberti comes up. But I think we have the entrance to the school, which is on one hand, you know, a value to a lot of people in the community. And then we have the access that Brewster Ave, the one-way street, provides to some people in the community as well. I think I'll hand it over to you for a second.
I'd be afraid to connect my phone to that, by the way. So in your packet is support from the police department and from the fire department. What I have here, I can pass out to the council, is the support from the public works department as well. But we've looked at this area extensively, particularly as it relates to public safety response. I will tell you that in my memo, you'll see that from the Main Street corridor to the downtown area, Brewster Ave is not the choice for police and fire to go down to get to downtown. Typically, the quickest way and the safest way for public safety to get downtown from the Main Street corridor is Center to Park, to Payson. And that also gives us the opportunity to get to Union Street and Upper Main, if need be, through Center Street. So Brewster Ave is really from public safety. We don't use it. We definitely try not to use it. And it makes, it makes good sense for us, from public safety, and I'll speak for Chief Motters well. This does not impact public safety whatsoever. So we are in support of this, and as is the DPW, as you can see in that. So with that, I'll entertain questions that relates to public safety and Brewster Ave, and/or Greenwood Court, for that matter.
Are there any questions for the chief relating to public safety, relating to this? I don't see any. Thank you very much, chief.
Certainly.
Mr. President? I had wanted to ask a question of Jeff Bag regarding...
Okay, actually, Counselor Kozinski, I have a question for city planner Bag, please, just before you start.
Jeff, you had said that there was information from the planning board delivered to the city council. I just checked with the clerk, and there was no, nothing that...
Oh, there wasn't? Okay.
...ever received from the planning board. I don't know how important that is to the entire process, but you said that there was considerations...
Yes, I...
...and information that had been communicated, and I just checked over here, and no one had gotten that.
Okay. And that, I apologize for. I believe that, not relying too much on technology, there may be a chance I could actually pull it up. So, but the planning board met recently to review it, and, you know, the way that the statute reads is that in a city or town, that does not have an official roadmap. So that qualifies as East Hampton. We don't now have an official map. So in the case where a city or town does not have an official map, the planning board must offer an advisory review to the city council prior to acceptance of a road or discontinuance of a road. It's all within the subdivision regulations. So the planning board met and heard a couple legitimate questions about, and their jurisdiction was pretty limited to just Brewster Ave. So they were not asked to weigh, or balance, or provide value to the exchange. Removing Brewster Ave as a public way raises a question about whether the existing lots that are on Brewster would become non-conforming in some way, because under zoning for a lot has to front it underway. So the opinion is that once, if this does happen, the road is discontinued as a public way, the parcels would be combined as one or operate as one under Williston's ownership. So there's no other owners along Brewster Ave. So that was not really an issue. It was a question that came up. The other question that was raised, just in terms of what a planning board typically looks at under a road, are the utilities. So I don't have all the information and data in my disposal, but there's sewer, water, and...
Stormwater.
Gas and electric, or electrics all above ground. So...
And storm...
Right.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Right. So there are some utilities under what we're calling Brewster Ave that, you know, would be easement, would be subject to an easement, or provided to Williston for maintenance in the future. So that was identified as a question and a concern. And then the final one was just whether closing Brewster Ave would have an effect or a change on the traffic patterns in the area. So the conversations were, you know, around that Williston did work on Brewster Ave about a year ago, and had the road closed for approximately three months. And during that time, there were no complaints or issues raised to the DPW, the police, fire, or anyone in City Hall. And, you know, the avenue for travel would be through Greenwood, Greenwood Ave?
Court.
Court, yep, Greenwood Court, and the one-way on Payson. So there's a circular movement around the area. If it's useful, I can try to pull up the memo and read it. But those were the three items that came out of the planning board meeting.
The traffic study issue.
Yeah, there was a question of whether a traffic study would be necessary. And generally, the conclusion is that, given the relatively low level of traffic using Brewster Ave on a one-way, it doesn't really warrant a traffic study, given that Greenwood Court is close by and is actually offering two-way traffic. So those were the key issues.
I think you covered the issues. I just wanted to be sure that there was no technical loss, because the letter had not been transmitted to the councilors regarding this matter. If we're supposed to comply with mass general laws, do you think your delivery of this covers us in that regard?
Yeah, and I'm happy to pull it up and we can, we can review it. And I think that would constitute what you need to, for that advisory opinion.
Uh, Counselor Peak, you have a question?
Yeah, just about when we get into the discussion of...
For me, or for...
For you.
Okay.
Counselor Bag.
No. I don't desire that.
So when we're talking about traffic studies, you know a lot more about this than me. How would you even do a traffic study in a case where, in addition to this road being closed, we're also looking at multiple other major changes in commuting patterns in the city as the elementary schools' traffic gets rerouted over to the new property, as potentially a roundabout enters into that property, as the elementary school properties, the traffic that exists there ceases to exist? Like, that seems like a lot of variables for you to even include.
Brewster Ave on a one-way, it doesn't really warrant a traffic study, given that Greenwood Court is close by and is actually offering two-way traffic. So those were the key issues.
I think you covered the issues. I just wanted to be sure that there was no technical loss because the letter had not been transmitted to the councilors regarding this matter. If we're supposed to comply with mass general laws, do you think your delivery of this covers us in that regard?
Yeah, and I'm happy to pull it up and we can we can review it, and I think that would constitute what you need to, for that advisory opinion.
Uh, Councilor Bagge, you have a question?
Yeah, just about when we get into the discussion of.
For me or for?
For you.
Okay.
Counselor Bagge.
No. I don't desire that.
So when we're talking about traffic studies, you know a lot more about this than me. How would you even do a traffic study in a case where, in addition to this road being closed, we're also looking at multiple other major changes in commuting patterns in the city as the elementary schools' traffic gets rerouted over to the new property, as potentially a roundabout enters into that property, as the elementary school properties, the traffic that exists there ceases to exist? Like, that seems like a lot of variables for you to even include in a traffic study. But I've, and that, to me, seemed, made the whole thing seem like a moot point, because how could you, how could you measure, not just one of those things in isolation, but all these things happening at once? But am I wrong there? Is that something that, I've never done a traffic study.
Right. And, you know, the city does not have anyone on staff who would conduct a traffic study. So it would be something where the city would have to engage a consultant to data collection. I think what you were talking about is where would the data get collected? So it would be, you know, one of the things is the number of cars that travel down Brewster Ave.
Right.
You know, and then you would have to subsequently calculate the number of cars that go down Greenwood. And then maybe the other, you know, the other avenue to pursue is down Main Street into your destination on Park Street. Well, there's also South Street. So you would have to go through kind of an elaborate process to determine that Brewster Ave is used as a cut-through, a one-way cut-through for what, you know, it's up to the council to decide, that's a relatively low number of vehicles that would have to find an alternative route.
Just to sort of clarify, I'm worried I didn't say that well. Brewster Ave is used in a current way right now, but one of the main things that people do with their cars is pick up and drop off their kids. And I'm, I guess, you know, just because this issue of a traffic study has come up before, given that the actual commuting pattern of those people is going to change, is that even something we feasibly could have done, given that whatever the current traffic patterns are in the city are going to change in notable ways because of the very project that is triggering this entire conversation?
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's a question there, which is, you know, the roundabout is intended to support moving vehicles through Park Street. And from there, you know, some people will go down to South Street, some people will continue down to Park Street, and then the reverse, you know, activity will happen. So, yeah, I don't know how much data you would gather from a parking study, I mean, a traffic study, and you're really looking at the trips on Brewster Ave. So, yeah, I think that you are raising a valid point about the complexity of the roundabout being added.
Thank you.
In terms of the necessity for a traffic study.
Jeff, you'll give us a copy of the report so that that can be on record?
Sure. Yes.
Great, thanks. Okay, I thank you. So I guess we can continue on.
Yes.
Anyone else from the city? Chief, you have anything to say about this, or?
No, I'm satisfied.
Okay. So we can move on to the public and quasi-public. Tom Brown, Chair of the School Building Committee. You'll be happy to know the extent of my technology is notes on the back of your program. I do want to take a moment, though, to thank members of the School Building Committee that are here tonight, our project manager, Colliers, and architect, Kayla and Binek. Just a few comments about the process. As you know, leading up to the support by the residents of the city for the new school, the committee held six public forums, and out of that public forum came a concern about traffic. And so we started the process with our professionals way back then to look at what we could do to potentially mitigate the traffic when we now bring all of these families that are currently going to Maple and Center and Pepin and Whitebrook all into the new facility. I think it's important to note that the committee did look, with the assistance of the professionals, did look at a lot of different alternatives before we came up with this one, to present this to the mayor, to take it, take it from there over the finish line. So where you see the roundabout on the map, we looked initially at pushing that, pushing that to the left. I'm not good with east or west, but pushing that to the left, there would be no need for the Williston property. However, there would then be need for acquisition of private property. I think two residents would be affected on the other side of the street. You know the slope there, there would be an issue with retaining walls. So at the end of the day, this became, for the roundabout, this became the most cost-effective alternative. We also looked at other alternatives. We looked at traffic lights. We looked at the possibility of having policemen there morning, noon, and night. And clearly, clearly, the roundabout became the most efficient and most cost-effective alternative, and the placement of it also became the most effective. I think it's important to note, though, especially for the residents of Park Street and all the residents of East Hampton that travel this route, you know what it's like today with Park Street, when families are going to Whitebrook, the South Street intersection that meets right close by. We did have a traffic study done, and the traffic study is rated A through F, A being the best, F being the worst. It's important to note that this intersection, the cars coming in and out of Whitebrook today, today, is rated F. So personally, as a resident, grandchildren in the schools, no, maybe they're gone already out of the schools. Anyway, we're not just, we're not just putting a roundabout in because of the school, it's also alleviating a long-term traffic issue on Park Street at this location, Park Street South and the school, notwithstanding the new school. Again, today, it's rated an F. So this is going to create a longstanding, a longstanding issue on that street. I think that's it from my vantage point. Any questions for the committee?
Questions for the school building?
Tom, I just wanted to say, I think the idea of the roundabout, wherever that came from and got processed through your committee, is a great idea. I think it will improve the safety, as you noted here. I want to see everything that's done to make sure that we do that, and for the safety of the faculty, the students, and the visitors to the city.
I think one other point about the timing of all this, too, you know, as you know, we're guided by MSBA, by our local professionals, but we also were not until we got far along in this process, as the mayor stated, this is an ad alternate, meaning we need the bids for the school to come in enough under budget to be able to support this project. It didn't make sense to us in the beginning that we needed to have control of this land for just an ad alternate. But that's MSBA regulation. Anything you're going to go out to bid with, anything, you must have control of that land that's going to, even though we don't need that for the school. The school can be built without the roundabout. But this is bigger than just a school, it's about the whole community and the folks that use that stretch of road. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I think, oh, Mr. Boyle.
David Boyle, committee member. I grew up on South Street, and so I'm familiar with the area. And I just want to make a few scattered observations to make, to provide some context. It's my understanding that around six years ago, Williston first approached the city about Brewster Ave, and they were turned down. And I was aware of that, and when they were turned down, I was like, I don't see why. I understand the Chapter 90 argument, but that's, that's actually a p poor, because if you do the math, it doesn't work out. But I guess it worked out for us because if we had given Brewster Court to them, then we wouldn't have the opportunity to do it now. When the roundabout issue came up in our meetings, I was scared because the initial roundabout plan, like Tom mentioned, had other parcels of land, one with very bad topography. I didn't see negotiations happening in a timely manner. I didn't see negotiations happening now. So it's a little bit of a blessing. And all honesty, when a lively farm came up for sale, I thought the city was remiss in not buying it, not looking at it. I understand city finances, I understand city, you know, distractions. But as a real estate person, I've always told people that a butters should look at their budding piece of property, because ownership is control. And if you have an opportunity, I mean, there's a, I can explain, there's two parcels on College Street that I know the owners are kicking themselves for not buying the next parcel for parking years ago at prices that would be, looking back, nothing. You know, and as far as appraisals go, I just want to mention one thing about appraisals in general. I can understand the layman in City Council, you want to rely on the appraisal. I had a friend recently ask me about an appraiser. He wanted the appraiser's name, and he was beating me up. I said, I'm not going to give you the appraiser's name till I understand why you want the appraisal. Well, I need an appraisal, I'm getting a divorce. He says, well, that's part of it. But the appraiser's going to appraise the value based upon the purpose. Residential houses is easy. You can go, anybody can do appraisal on a house, you can do opinion of value. But an appraisal is a snapshot in time, it's an opinion of value. It's an opinion of value with limited information, especially in this case. So appraisal has to be done by law, it should be done, it's a good exercise, it's good practice, but it is not the Bible. It is not the Bible. When I heard about, you know, when Chuck came to our first meeting and mentioned the swap, I was like, this is a home run. This is a home run. I know the land, I know that area. I happen to be able, lucky enough to say that I rode my motorcycle on Whitebrook before Whitebrook was built. So I know the area. This is a good deal. I don't know anything about the, you know, interworkings, you know, I hope everything works out fine. But we're lucky that we said no to Williston previously, because this is a good deal. And secondly, we don't need the roundabout for the school, but we certainly are making traffic better. I used to ride my bike no-handed down the street, you can't do that now. So I, you know, this is a good deal, I hope everyone, you know, looks at it that way. But keep things in context that, you know, maybe we wouldn't have been here if we did something different, but this is a good opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think, actually, certainly our Williston people have been sitting here patiently. So if there anyone from Williston would like to comment, this would be an opportunity.
It's been a great meeting, so we enjoy it every minute.
Chuck McCullough, I'm the Chief Financial Officer at the Williston North Hampton School. And first thing I'd like to do is just to commend a number of groups and people who have, as we've worked through this over the last year and a half or so, when that first concept came up, the School Building Committee, Jeff Bagge, the City Planner, the Planning Board, the representatives from Kayla and Binek, who have been really helpful and thoughtful about what could be done, certainly the Property Subcommittee and their review, Chief Alberti, Chief Modder, Mayor LaChapelle. And certainly also, I'd like to commend Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys, because we did beat him up quite a bit on asking him prints and thoughts on what to do there. So, but this is all quite a collaborative effort regarding the development of the plans for the turnaround, as well as the, as well as the consideration of the land trade, because none of us have done this before, so we really needed some guidance along the way to think through how this would work. But it's certainly been, in our minds at least, it's been a really collaborative and supportive project all the way around. Secondly, and just to reiterate, the reason why we have suggested this all along is that we have, obviously, there's safety considerations that we are all supportive of as members of the city regarding the turnaround and what it'll do in terms of the safety pertaining to the entrance to the new school, but just in traffic on Park Street in general. But secondly, from our standpoint, also Brewster Avenue, the reason why we've suggested this trade and considered it for a while is just really, it's just a safety issue for our boarding students. We have two dormitories that will, one now and one in the next year, that will be right in that area. And we also have our middle school students who are walking. And in the morning, particularly in the mornings, that is where students are either walking along the roadway or are crossing that roadway at a time when there's a considerable amount of traffic. And it's just really, the morning only, really, is what we've seen. And frankly, a lot of that traffic is generated from our school. Other than that, not a lot of activity, from what we've seen, but also the speed in which people are traveling. So there has been some safety concerns in there for a number of years now. So just to emphasize why there's been some interest on our part in doing this for a while now. All right? Thank you.
Any questions for Williston School?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public or any of the, I may have forgotten, would like to, actually, maybe I'll give Attorney Tanner a chance to stretch his legs, could I ask?
I guess I work for Jeff now, isn't it? So I was, Mark Tanner, the city solicitor, I was really just here in case you had questions about the legality of things or the process for doing things. I think the people who have spoke have laid out pretty well the process that's going on. I could tell you, it's not an uncomplicated transaction that we're trying to enter into, and we've given a lot of thought as to how to structure it and how to do it. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Attorney?
I would have loved to have asked you earlier, just about, because Mr. Bagge had laid out that there were three ways, purchase, swap, or exchange, or eminent domain. And one of the questions I think I would have liked to ask was, could you describe the eminent domain process to us? How long does it take? What are the pitfalls? Obviously, you go before a judge, and the judge will make compensation adjustments based on the judge's evaluation of appraisals. But mainly, it's designed so that owners, any owner who has their land taken by any jurisdiction, to get just compensation. So the idea is to make sure it's fair. So can you just?
Sure. And that's really the, so the process is essentially, the City Council makes the decision to do a taking, you take a vote, you appropriate money, and at the point that the vote happens, the taking is done. And then you get into how much the other party actually gets for the land. And so it's a, it's not a fast process, but it's by no means a slow process. The real issue when you do an eminent domain taking, and I've represented landlords, or landlords, property owners against cities when they've had their land taken, the issue is what's the fair market value of the land? And so we've given you, as you know, there's two appraisals that are out there that show that this land, at least from an appraisal value, has relatively little value. When you get to the eminent domain taking process, it's actually a jury trial. So you have, you know, 12 people who probably don't like paying taxes to start with, deciding that, how much the city should pay a landowner whose property they took. And so it's, I'll use the term Wild West, it's sketchy at best, what's going to happen, because you just don't know who you're going to get on a jury. And so what happens is, is you would certainly put the appraisals into evidence, and they're evidence of the value of the land. But what the jury's told they have to consider is the highest and best use of that land, even if it's not used at that particular point in time for that particular purpose. And so I've been involved in cases where there was a taking of land of just empty raw land, a field, and the owner of the land came in with a 15-lot subdivision. And I was talking to Jeff about this earlier, and then you put Jeff on the stand and say, if I took this to the Planning Board, is there any reason this plan wouldn't get approved? And Jeff's going to say, no, it meets the criteria. And now the taking value that you're talking about isn't this raw piece of land, it's a 15-lot subdivision. And so the issue that was going through my mind in this particular case, when you're talking about doing a taking, is there had been an approved solar farm on the property. And we represent a fair amount of solar developers, and they make a lot of money off those projects. And so the damages in this particular case, at least if I was Williston, I'd be arguing that the value of the taking is the value of the loss in revenue over the next 30 years of that portion of my solar field. And so when you talk about, you know, is the city getting a good deal here, right? When you think about how much you would have to pay me to defend that city, and then you think about the value of that area of land over the next 30 years as a solar field, it's not an inconsequential amount of money. So once again, certainly, taking is something that towns regularly do. I think you have to take into all the considerations, what's the value of the street to the city? What's the real cost of doing the taking? And at least in my opinion, and the conversations I've had with the mayor, the swap makes a lot of sense fiscally.
Question as a follow-up to the projected value of land that has a solar field, that has a permit to have a solar field that hadn't been exercised for two years. To date, for whatever reasons, there still isn't a solar field, but it had been permitted two years ago. I don't know how long that permit lasts without action being taken on it. And also, how, if there have been cases where a judge looks at this and says, there's permission to have a field, but there's no contract to have a field, there isn't, nothing in the ground, there's no solar panels, there's no real estate to really affect value, have there been cases to?
There are. And once again, you go back to what's the highest and best use of the land, even if it's not currently being used for that purpose. And once again, if I was representing Williston in this case, by the time it came to trial, I'd have a contract with a solar company for a solar field on that parcel. I'd have a contract with a solar company for a solar field on that parcel. And Jeff Bag is going to have to say, if I'm examining him, the laws with regard to the development of solar fields in East Hampton haven't really changed. If that were presented to the planning board, in my opinion, it would be permitted. And that's what a jury is going to hear, and it's 51%. Who do they believe, 51% this way or this way? And the cases say that, you know, that it's the highest and best use and not what's permitted or what is actually there. And so it's a real risk.
Did you happen to consider any, any exchange with other parts of the parcel?
Because I think we're getting in the weeds here, it's about hypotheticals of what if, and it's the executive's decision that their approach is going to be a swap.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Zarek?
Yes, thank you. You're a busy guy.
I don't like seeing my name in PowerPoint.
Thanks for all the work you've done on this and for the matter that came to us before and just the work you're doing for the state so far. I appreciate you also clarifying some of the legal information behind land taking and eminent domain. I'm actually very thankful that we fell, the situation kind of, I wouldn't say fell into our laps, but that we kind of had the stars aligned to make, to vote on making this exchange possible and not to enter into any sort of adverse relationship with Williston, who I think is being pretty flexible in this deal. The only thing I wanted to clarify, and I don't know if this is decided yet, and I think you mentioned this, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, in the property subcommittee, is this definitely, is the plan to definitely make this a swap? Or you had mentioned perhaps assigning some arbitrary value, like a dollar to the, is there, and is there, and I don't want to get in the weeds, so if this is going to get in the weeds, you can let me know. But is there any, from the, from the legal perspective of the land exchange or acquisition, is there any advantage to either in terms, in terms of deciding to assign like a dollar value or just making it a clean exchange?
So I think the easiest way to do it is as an exchange. We had initially, you know, we had the appraisals done and those sorts of things, so that in the event that there had to be some other option exercised, that the council would have the ability to do that and the mayor would have the ability to do that. But assuming that you're willing to approve a land exchange, I see that as the cleanest way to do it. And I'd just say that one of the things that came up in the subcommittee meeting was the whole notion of reserving easements and what's going to happen to this and what's going to happen to this. And the place that those get, issues get worked at are in the reciprocal deeds back and forth. And I've certainly gone back after the comments that you made and looked very closely at the language that we used to make sure that the issues that were raised in that committee meeting were covered. The other thing that I've given to the, to the Williston School for a review is a release of the takings claims they might have if the road is discontinued, so that we can make sure that the city's covered on all fronts with regard to any issue that might arise from either of these transactions. And those are all things that will ultimately be negotiated back and forth between the lawyers and then approved by the executive.
Is that it? Questions legal right now? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? We have been heard. Otherwise, Counselor Kuzinski, are you ready to make a motion?
Well, we have a motion. To acquire by, I move to acquire by exchange a portion of a parcel of land known as 198 Park Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, and consisting of approximately 14,267 feet, plus or minus, shown as parcel A on a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in East Hampton, Massachusetts, surveyed for the Williston North Hampton School by Heritage Surveys Incorporated and dated July 1, 2019. Williston parcel to be acquired and owned in fee simple by the City of East Hampton for the purpose of reconstructing and expanding Park Street, a public way, and for constructing a roundabout on Park Street in the vicinity of White Brook Middle School. Such Williston parcels to be exchanged for the discontinuance, abandonment, and conveyance of the city of, by the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts. Brewster Avenue, a public way per Article 22 of the town meeting vote dated March 21, 1959, in the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts, running from Main Street to Park Street in East Hampton, Mass., containing 24,607 square feet, plus or minus, as further shown on a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in East Hampton, Massachusetts, surveyed for the inhabitants of East Hampton by Heritage Surveys Incorporated and dated July 1, 2019, Brewster Avenue, from and by the City of East Hampton to the Williston North Hampton School.
Second. A motion is second to the previously read motion. Some questions or comments? Counselors there?
I just wanted the opportunity to weigh in as another member of the property subcommittee, one of three members, myself, Counselor Kuzinski, and Counselor Peak. I was, having been part of that meeting, I appreciate what the mayor said earlier about defending the position of the executive branch versus the legislative branch. And I think oftentimes, we all question, we all have feelings about what our powers and scope should be, but oftentimes, what we feel they are is not necessarily what they are according to charter and rules. Having been a participant in that meeting, I wanted to take the opportunity to apologize to the mayor if anything I did in that meeting slighted her or offended her in any way as well. I think that the materials provided were ample. They were received in the June 19 packet. And even being on vacation, I was able to review them and find myself prepared for the meeting. I think that, I want to thank Williston, who was there. I was looking forward to seeing Mr. McCullough at the meeting, but I know that Hester Hill stood in. And I appreciate all the information that was provided. I think you were very patient in quite a lengthy meeting and tolerating questions and some interruptions, so thank you for providing all of that. And that was certainly very happy and fortunate for me that I could acquire that information from you. Again, I just want to reiterate for the, for the council gathered, not knowing what their intentions are to vote, that this is really an opportunity of the century. We, you know, we don't, as Mr. Brown said, and Mr. Boyle also said, we don't need this roundabout for the new school. But I also probably think I could speak for him when I say that Officer Alberti doesn't want to assign officers out there directing traffic.
But it voted.
Sorry, Chief Alberti. Chief Alberti. I think that this is, this is an excellent opportunity for what's, what I believe is exceptional design for this pre-K through eight school. It's kind of icing on the cake that we're going to have the most amenable traffic option. You know, in regards to appraisals, I don't work in that field, so I can't really comment. But what I could, what I could say is no matter what the value is, it's kind of like that credit card commercial, the appraisal is X amount and the amenable traffic pattern is priceless. I wanted to again thank Williston. I think the mayor touched on some points also when she spoke earlier, and I also appreciate her taking a page out of some of my playbook at some city council meetings. I think that oftentimes, we get too caught up in, and I won't get in the weeds too much about this, but we get too caught up in kind of what we have versus what the Williston North Hampton School has. And I think it's really important, and this is a great example of how we can be the best neighbors and be most collaborative. And I think, you know, we should continue to kind of focus on our relationship in that manner as opposed to really anything else. So thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, we have a motion, Counselor Peak?
Really quick. We are trading a liability for an asset. That's what's going on here. We get zero revenue off this street. We get a little bit of Chapter 90 money for it. We have to spend more money taking care of it than that money gets, like we do for every street, because that's the deal with the state right now. So what we're doing is we're saying we're getting a thing and we're giving away a requirement to pay for a thing. That's all you need to know about it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
I think we have
Yeah, we still got
Two through eight here to go through.
Oh.
Two through seven. So I apologize.
I thought we had more motions, I guess.
We have many motions to go through to make this official. So there is a resolution before us to, regarding the expansion of Park Street as necessary for the construction of a new K through eight school. City Council Resolution, a resolution to acquire, exchange a portion of the real property known as 198 Park Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, consisting of 14,267 square feet, plus or minus. There is a long resolution. That goes a full page. Do we, everybody has their resolution in front of you?
Okay, how about approve the resolution as presented?
I would have moved to approve the resolution as presented in writing to the council as opposed to reading it.
Second.
A motion, second to approve the resolution as presented?
Disappearing.
Yeah. We need six.
Uh, we need, we have six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Two votes that need to be taken. I move to discontinue and abandon the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts' rights, if any, in Brewster Avenue, a public way per Article 22 of the town meeting vote dated March 21, 1959, in the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts, running from Main Street to Park Street in East Hampton, Mass., containing 24,607 square feet, plus or minus, as further shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land in East Hampton, Massachusetts, surveyed for the inhabitants of East Hampton by Heritage Surveys Incorporated and dated July 1, 2019, and attached here too as Exhibit A, Brewster Avenue.
Second. A motion, second to approve the, to approve the previously read motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
I move that the mayor or her designee be and is hereby authorized to enter into all agreements, to execute any and all instruments relative to the discontinuance, abandonment, and conveyance of any remaining property rights, if any, of the city of, in Brewster Avenue to Williston, including but not limited to the reservation of easement rights in favor of the city as may be necessary on behalf of the city to effect the foregoing.
Second. A motion, second to approve the previously read motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
We have another resolution entitled Discontinuance, Abandonment, and Conveyance of Interest in Brewster Avenue as a Public Way in East Hampton. It's a city council resolution, a resolution to discontinue, abandon, and convey the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts' remaining interest, if any, in Brewster Avenue, a public way in East Hampton, Massachusetts, to the Williston North Hampton School. It is a one, two, three-page
Second.
Resolution. I would like to move that we accept as
As presented. As presented. There's a second from Counselor Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Number six, I move to approve the map exhibits. And those exhibits have already been attached as described, and I don't think we have to. I think we've completed the task.
Okay, thank you, Williston, for your
Thank you.
You still have another one, Captain?
Yes, and I'm glad we have Mr. Tanner.
Two minutes.
Okay, actually, why, yeah, so why don't we take like, until we can, and we have like, still at 2:5 after, if you could take a break, and we'll adjourn back here at 2:5. Thank you.
So you can put, you can say about two, three, four, obviously. Because I had you.
Oh, you didn't vote on, okay, you were back for four.
I was back for five. I said, absolutely. Okay, that's
I wanted to say
She's in the
I just wanted to comment.
It was very helpful.
You ever done that? I guess. Grabbers this has. I can reject one on rappers.
I'm going to take one of my candy bars.
Oh, yeah, thank you for the sugar. Yeah.
This is the welcoming trust.
I was like, oh my god.
Oh, the tar.
I'm happy, you guys
Come on.
School today, does it go this long?
No.
I don't think we've ever gone more than an hour.
Not lately. Thank you.
He's got my stuff, as long as he doesn't lose it.
Do you need a copy of your resolution?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Okay, thanks. I only need one.
I would have taken it if I knew it was there.
I would have taken one if you had one left. That looks like dinner to me.
I think we're done, are we done with this?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how I didn't, how come I didn't get told after my entire chicken tender.
Oh, yeah. I'll bring up that.
That was kind of a little slight.
Yeah.
Oh, wait. Oh, wait. I wasn't doing my technology show.
You don't have enough power on your phone, are you kidding?
Yeah, I was going to be flashy.
Absolutely.
It's too late. This is like, many boards usually just get started. Just secondary.
There's only the good kind.
Thought I had a good one.
They said, it looked like he was in shock.
Signs for the Medicare and the 15,000.
No, they were like, put it in this box.
Jeff, Jeff, can you email all those to me tomorrow?
Yes, I apologize about the network. Right before I was going with the Disney World. I sent it to the mayor.
Okay, you're good. Just give it to me, so I can
No.
Okay, you're welcome.
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 That's how soft and furry I am.
Can we continue, guys?
Can we continue?
Yes, please.
I mean, this day is long enough.
If I'll continue?
Tonight? I have neither. Absolutely. Nice, Owen.
We're gonna start, JP.
Attorney Tanner, can I cut you off? I know I can't, Counselor Kuzinski.
No.
Okay, you're still on, Counselor Kuzinski.
Okay. At the property subcommittee, there was brought, and this was not voted by the property subcommittee to make a decision on a recommendation because there was a lack of information upon which we felt we could make a decision with regard to an Eversource site license at two locations, that location being, one location being the city parking lot at the municipal building, and the other location being 122 Pleasant Street Parking Lot in the back of 122 Pleasant. So we did have some questions. I did not, was not able to open up the document that I believe Counselor Zaret. You were able to open up a document, and I think you tried to forward that to me. I couldn't open that up, so I didn't have any of the questions answered, and I'm glad that you both are here and maybe can bring those answers to us.
If I may, sir, that was just a link to the June 19 packet, so I think it was information that was available to us.
Wasn't anything?
These were questions regarding the license.
Yeah, either the mayor or maybe there's been opportunity for either one of you to start. Counselor Kuzinski, maybe you could ask either the mayor?
Yeah, I think that some of, some of the questions were the detail, the financial arrangements with the license agreement, and where the cutoffs were, what the amounts were, that wasn't altogether clear.
So in context for what I'm asking for, which is authorization to enter into agreements and to execute agreements relative to Eversource is contingent, this project, this is the one of two grants that makes this project possible. The elements of the agreement with Eversource are somewhat shifting because we don't even know if we're gonna go forward with this if we don't get the Massachusetts EVIP grant. These two grants that make the project possible are not aligned as far as timeline and, and when information is due. Eversource's grant to us is due sooner rather than later. We've asked for an extension in signing that agreement from July 1st to July 10th, and then we will wait to see what the Massachusetts EVIP program, if we get that grant, and that grant is from Volkswagen money, the settlement with Volkswagen. We have just heard that the Massachusetts grant, the awards are going to be pushed back a little bit, so we want to be ready with the Eversource, the, my approval to negotiate the Eversource agreement because of the delay with the Massachusetts grant, and to also to be able to show to the Massachusetts folks that we are ready to go and that we're already have Eversource lined up. There also is some concern that Eversource, to get on their construction schedule and their project schedule, we want to be able to do that as soon as possible and be able to pull the trigger as soon as we get the, okay, I'm assuming we'll get the second grant, but if we get the second grant. For further, I do, I have one answer as far as the question, the chargers that we would like to put in, the option to charge for those charge or not is with the municipality in the negotiation. I will say most definitely we will charge for the charge to make this project cost-neutral to the city. So it's not something, you know, controlled by Eversource or Massachusetts, state of Massachusetts, so we know that for sure. I'd like to invite Planner Jeff Bag up, who has been working on the details of this. I would also like to, before he takes the podium, to thank Attorney Tanner for really the excellent work he has done for the city since taking the position. We can, we keep him very, very busy, and no matter the timeline, his work and his team's work has just been very thorough, meaningful, really, to the commitment that we all have to transparent and accessible government, and really clarifying a lot of issues outside of the question that we have. On top of that all, it's, it's excellent legal work, so, Jeff?
Thank you again. I think the mayor did a great job giving the intro. I think, you know, sitting here all night, I think this is, this is the third level of seeing really progression, being progressive, the city council being progressive. What we are trying to do here with the electric vehicle charging stations is, is pretty ambitious, and the mayor mentioned Mass EVIP, so that is the program that Volkswagen, when they falsified records, you know, there's, there's money through the Mass DEP to provide incentives for electric vehicle charging stations. What the mayor failed to mention is that we are also trying to align funding from green communities, so we are a green community, we submitted an application for green communities, so it's really split. I have notes here, but this is really trying to stack three grant funding sources together, which is what makes it a little bit complicated in kind of juggling the timelines with all of them. We heard fairly recently that Eversource wanted a commitment by municipalities by July 1st, and so pretty much as soon as we heard that, that created the conversation about latching on this project with a special meeting. We do have word from them that they're, they, they see our commitment to move the agreements to city council on this date, but we are trying to be as ready as possible. So this Eversource is the one where this will act essentially as an easement for Eversource to install the infrastructure. So there's a box, electrical box, and then the utilities will go underground to a point where it'll pop out of the ground, and then they're done. But I think it's important to note that Eversource, the Eversource incentive, it covers 100% of the costs for the infrastructure. Where they leave off is the municipality pays for the charger. So the chargers are not cheap, but they're not, they're not really expensive, but basically for two chargers, which would, each one would charge two cars, the rate, the going rate, the going cost is about $15,000 for the equipment, and then there is about $2,500 worth of license agreement software and things like that. So what we're trying to do is have Eversource pay for the installation of the utilities. In particular, for 50 Payson, it's the Mass EVIP program that would cover about $15,000 of the $17,000 for the chargers. And so we're trying aggressively to use, to patch these funding sources together, and then same thing, similar with green communities, where we're trying to use Eversource funding to bring utilities across the back of the Mills parking area to a point where we would then have grant-funded chargers. I think the mayor spoke about costs, I think that came up at the subcommittee, I was in Disney World, that came up at the subcommittee level, you know, it is a, it's, we are, we're, we're two steps probably before we establish hard costs on the electrical service, but the, the municipalities that have done this so far, so I have, I had heard from mostly a couple towns out east, Medford, there was Beckett, you know, I had some information from Beckett, where they are charging users a fee to plug in, and so the charger takes about between one and three hours to, to charge a car, and you can charge them an hourly rate. And so I think the rates, the information that Eversource gave was that the rates would start out higher while demand is a little bit lower, so as people learn about these, people will use them more, and then ultimately the costs can go down per charge, and that will pay for the electrical service coming from the city to the chargers. But I think what, what's really important to just articulate is that the Eversource agreement is, is an instrument that we're trying to have the mayor ready to execute for when we hear for Mass EVIP and for green communities, so that we can be ready to, to stack the three grant sources together. I think that there's some additional information in the memo. I do want to say that I did, I did apply some concerted effort to provide information in, in the council's June packet. So in the council's packet was a memo summarizing both the Eversource program and the other two grants, and in the packet were the draft site host agreement and the, and the other one, which has a similar name, the site license agreement. So those were provided in draft form, the city attorney did review them and requested some changes from Eversource, but their response was that a couple of the items are based on the state's tariff or whatever the state program is that they're utilizing that couldn't be changed. So we did make an attempt to try to loosen it up a little bit, but Eversource kind of gave us some leeway and then kept some of their provisions in place. So in your packet tonight is the final site host agreement and site license agreement that has been reviewed by the city attorney and Eversource and agreed to, so that is the final language. And then again, ultimately, the vote is really to authorize the mayor to execute this, these two agreements, if and when we can be provided with those other two grant funds. I believe actually that in the packet, the June packet was the budget, so I did provide budget information for both of the grants to show the breakdown. There are some one-time costs to the city, so when, in 2009, I thank Stewart a lot for this, the city created the 40R zoning district, and we got, we got a zoning incentive fund as a result of that. Some of you were here, it, it was used partially to fund the pond construction. My, my only effort with that money has been to use, to use it to leverage other larger funding sources. So from that zoning incentive fund, our match is, is $7,500 for 50 Payson and $7,500 for the location behind the Mills, and that gets us the $15,000 chargers plus an unknown cost that Eversource is gonna install all the utilities for free. So leveraging 7,500 to get, you know, the infrastructure in place for our first four chargers is an important project for us.
I think there was some question about the removal process, should something happen that before the end of the contract, the property has to be removed, who pays for it, and maybe you can just
Right, and if there's a provision of the site host agreement, I know that the stip, it stipulates that we attempt to keep the chargers in place for five years, so if we can keep the chargers in place for five years, that appears to be the threshold that Eversource is looking for before there's some discussion of, of, you know, removing equipment. And for, for a large part, it's going to be one junction box, so we have a green, a large green junction box out here on the corner, there'll be another smaller but similar structure, that's the really thing that you'll see that Eversource will install, the rest of utilities will go underground.
Assuming all goes well, what's the lifespan of the equipment that'll be installed, approximately?
So again, I think for Eversource, so your question's a little bit beyond Eversource's, you know, infrastructure goes underground, and I don't know, but it's presumed to be long enough to support chargers, I guess, I would note that there is expandability from the Eversource equipment, so we're providing two chargers, the infrastructure that they'll put in will support up to 10. So I think, you know, the locations were identified to support, in City Hall, it's the few spaces that face the pond, and with some, you know, expansion, they could wrap around and connect to the other parking spaces at City Hall, so we could, this is an expandable system. I think your question was about the chargers themselves, and I
Right, but I appreciate the expansion possibility, that's
Right.
Well thought.
I think that they're planning for additional chargers as these programs become more popular.
Thank you.
Counselor Zaret?
Jeff, two quick questions, I think one of you potentially answered, but regarding the EVIP funding, if we miss out on that opportunity, would it be fair to say that that opportunity had evaporated?
Not this late, though.
No, but quickly, in terms of the expansion opportunity, is that something that, once we enter into the, once we enter into the site host agreement, can we expand at will, or do we have to vote again in some capacity? So it's no less than two and no more than 10, do, if we agree to this, can the, does the, is the municipality allowed to then add up to 10 incrementally, or do they have to agree on a certain number?
My, I, I can hazard the guess, I do not know honestly, but I think the program is intended to be an incentive. The literature that may have not made it to you are the, the one or two-page pamphlets that Eversource has for this program. They are trying to bring more chargers into Massachusetts. So my best guess is that, once they have the utilities installed, we're in the clear to add, it, it would be at our cost, so we would have to incur some costs to continue to run the infrastructure underground around the corner, so this is 50 Payson, the spaces targeted are the first four, there's the fifth and sixth that are right in that line, and then, actually, with some reconfiguration of the striping, you could then just wrap the corner and cover a few more chargers. If I had my way, we would be continuing to add to this fleet, and my understanding is that Eversource would be supportive of it, whether it requires council approval or not, I think, I think they're, they're trying to encourage these. We're just trying to meet pretty aggressive timelines, and I've said this, I think, a couple times before, but we can't do that much, but what we can do as a municipality is be as nimble as possible, and it's, you know, I submitted this in beginning of, middle of June, so we're at July, you know, and that's fast, so I'm appreciative of, of the effort that you guys have shown so far. I don't know if it's necessary for me to show the Mills parking area, but if you are familiar with the back of the Mills, there's a ramp from the bike path up, and you enter the Mills, there's four parallel spaces, and so those are the parking spaces targeted for the first two, so two chargers charge four cars, and then the expandability would be the next row over down there, so that was definitely a consideration.
That's municipal property?
That is municipal property, so the city owns that parking area in the back.
Additional questions, Planner? Okay. Counselor Kuzinski?
Before we proceed, I would like to thank, I did it at the property subcommittee meeting, because of the urgency to move this all forward quickly, we had to call a quick meeting, and Counselor Zaret was very accommodating at essentially shortening his vacation to be at that meeting for public business, so I publicly wanted to say thank you and let the other counselors know again, that is very much appreciated, and that has helped us to meet the timelines that came to us. With that said, I would like to make a motion, a move that the mayor or her designee be and is hereby authorized to enter into all agreements and to execute any and all instruments relative to the Eversource site license agreement and site host agreements with respect to the installation of EV chargers and associated infrastructure at both 50 Payson Avenue and the city-owned parking lot area behind Pleasant Street Mills as may be necessary on behalf of the city to effect the foregoing.
Second. Sure, motion second to approve the previously read motion, according to the Eversource license agreements for 50 Payson Avenue and Pleasant Street Mills. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. All, Jan, motion to close public hearings.
The move.
All those in favor?
That has to be the longest public hearing. It's up there, yes.
I believe we left off at ordinance, which I believe is con相反.
So we had a meeting June 27th, maybe, and present were Counselor Derby and myself. In that meeting, we reviewed the conundrum that is the pedal and party, and realized that at that meeting, and in, in order to move this along, we created two potential ordinances, one that would be highly restrictive of this kind of vehicle, and one that would be more in line and showing the rules and regulations and guidance around how we would actually implement this. So we had two, and, so what about those two? So, as a result, we, I had intended today to move both of those to a public meeting, but instead what we're gonna do is move one to a public meeting, and the other one, we're gonna send back to the ordinance subcommittee to tweak it and to put in some additional guard, guardrails and guidelines that need to be there. So rather than have it debated in a public forum here with probably numerous amounts of amendments, we're gonna go back and, and take a look at that particular one, the one that is more allowing of this to happen. So with that in mind, I, I just wanted to make a statement too about this whole thing and the, the challenges of, of putting this ordinance forth. So first thing is that without any other guidance and owing to the ambiguity and conflict around categorizing this vehicle, it is right that the current East Hampton ordinances 31 and 317 should be interpreted with the safety of the public in mind, as has been done by the chief of the East Hampton Police Department. As we move forward, however, it is clear that there is no standard definition or category for this type of vehicle in our current ordinances. Most other cities operating a vehicle of this kind refer to it in their ordinances as something other than a bike. In Minneapolis, they refer to it as a commercial pedal car, in Nashville, a pedal carriage, in Milwaukee, a commercial quadricycle. In all cases, new ordinances were created to account for this new commercial enterprise, sometimes referred to as experiential tourism. For East Hampton, the pedal and party business is the first entrance, entrant into this kind of experiential tourism in Massachusetts. It therefore falls to this legislative body to enact a new ordinance to permit or restrict the operation of this type of vehicle on our roads and the man-hand rail trail. To attempt to fit this venture into existing ordinances or categories or definitions of what we mean or do not mean by the term bicycle is like traveling down a road with no off-ramp. It's a long ride, and you never get anywhere. Tonight, the ordinance committee is presenting one ordinance, one option one option of an ordinance of two to be considered. We were not able to reach a consensus, which is why we originally came up with two. The first option is around restricting the width and the length of a vehicle that would be allowed to be on the manhand rail trail. It is that ordinance that I am going to make a motion to move that particular one to a public meeting on...
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah, thank you. Public hearing on August seventh. So that is in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Set a public hearing. Some questions or comments?
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to make a request for consideration to some degree of amending that, the nature of the public hearing. I feel that that language already preexists in language that I submitted, I believe, in the late May, the May meeting. And has been extant in sub-
Extant what?
Extant. In subcommittee for approximately a couple of months. It also includes, I think, some very valuable language that I thought was important for consideration of the city council around not only the size of vehicles on the bike path, but also looking at our definitions of bicycles, as well as consideration of issues around electric bicycles, especially with the now existence of Valley Bike Share and considerations there. And so what I'd actually like to do, since the width, a width restriction was included in that, I believe that the language that was proposed is very similar. I'd actually like to propose that we set the public hearing for the entirety of that ordinance, which has already been submitted and on the agenda for a public hearing, so that we don't legislate piecemeal. And that we also, we allow government to move a little faster than it normally does. And also, this allows us to have a deadline to deliberate something that's, that's been in committee for quite some time and should be moved forward.
My concern about the broader ordinance was there were a couple already, I think, pretty significant issues. One of them, that it was said the permitting would be through the city clerk's office, talking to the city-
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about, President McCoy. This is, this is language that I submitted, that was accepted back, back, I believe, in May, which goes through our current, which goes through, and was sent to the ordinance subcommittee, which goes through some of our regulations around the rail trail, including considering width for vehicles, defining electrical, electric bikes, categorizing, categorizing electric bikes. And I think that that is more of an all encompassing ordinance. It's already in the subcommittee. And I think that instead of bringing, bringing just the width restriction in right now with this preexisting language there is kind of like saying that we're going to legislate cannabis and we're just going to vote on the hours of operation first. Where we have an entirety of an ordinance that's there, exists, it's been submitted. It was accepted to the subcommittee. I think we should just hold a public hearing on that, so we're not, we're not litigating this forever.
Now, this year has not been voted on in subcommittee, is that correct?
That is correct. But much like many other agenda items where it's introduced at the full, at the full city council level and immediately a public hearing is set before it's even deliberated, I see no difference in doing the same now, just somewhat, to some degree in retrospect. And we'll still have the opportunity to deliberate it.
My, my, correct me if I'm wrong. My recognition of most of those are like finding out things that aren't so much interpretive as this one might be. But we have some more discussion, Counselor.
In the interest of efficiency, is it possible for us to set a public hearing for an ordinance related to the, this thing? And then have us, have the ordinance subcommittee take the next month to figure out what precisely it is that they would like to?
Is that two?
It needs to be, I don't specifically need the exact wording by like tomorrow, like I usually would. But I think you need to have a, you need to say what you're going to vote on. Whether you're just going to vote on a part, or you're going to vote on that.
That way, the public is fully informed with what is, the public hearing is all about, right? Is that the point of?
Well, I would need that by the time the ad goes in the paper.
Absolutely, right.
But I think you need to vote on what you're going to.
And to say we're going to be very vague, we're going to be like saying, we're going to vote on the marijuana ordinance, or we're going to vote on pre-bait.
Again, I'd say my argument is that we have preexisting language submitted that's been in subcommittee. And I'm just asking to set a public hearing for it so that we can deliberate and then bring it, and then come for a public hearing for that.
Okay, so part of the point, we have a motion, a second already, for the, to set a public hearing for this shorter version of just really addressing the width. So we have to, unless people want to withdraw their motions in second, we have to take a vote on that.
Unless it's amended.
Well, basically, we're proposing an amendment.
I don't know. But unless it's amended.
Bring the full, the full ordinance language forward. That's, that's been submitted as is in subcommittee.
Counselor Coniff.
I feel uncomfortable setting a public meeting for a document that was not voted on in subcommittee and agreed to, to bring forward to this committee as it would be, would eventually, essentially have the appearance of our recommendation or a piece of our recommendation. We didn't vote on it, it's not part of what we've done. So our options are, from my perspective, two. We vote on this particular thing for a public hearing, yes or no. You won't hurt my feelings. And then pending that, we move the whole thing back to subcommittee, take it completely off the table, and we continue to go down the path of what we've been doing.
I mean, I think, you know, obviously, just about a public hearing set doesn't mean that it can be removed from the agenda. I mean, if the subcommittee meets and comes up with a compromise of everyone's language or takes votes, yes or no, they come forward with a document, that could be set for September. I guess I share somewhat of Counselor Zarek's. I feel that it would be nice to have some direction for this business owner. And if, if the first direction is simply, these are the width and length, that would at least give Counselor-
So when we discussed the cannabis ordinance, Counselor Kuzynski brought to the table a series of amendments, adding additional language that he thought was valuable. And many of those things we did end up approving. In the interest of having this in August, could we do that, that we bring in this in its limited scope? And then Counselor Zarek, if you'd like to introduce additional language, then you do that in the form of amendment to the document that Counselor Coniff is suggesting that we bring forward?
I think it'd be too broad.
Yeah, exactly. I think even referring back to Counselor Kuzynski, I think those were relatively changing from a three-fifty to seven-fifty. I mean, those were the kind of changes, not adding whole sections relating to this or that. That's what my concern, Counselor.
Well, I think Counselor Gomez.
Okay.
I was going to say, in all fairness, this is an agenda item. Several proposed amendments to chapter three, bicycles. It's in subcommittee. The language exists.
But that's just an agenda item. It's not like, I think you would, you can't vote on just that line. I mean, I think it has to be a document that you would-
It is a document. I submitted it.
But we can vote on it in the city.
I think it's important.
But we're, all we're doing is setting it, we're setting a deadline, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think it's important when it comes to an ordinance that requires six votes to have a document be presented pretty much in, in it, something in its entirety, for the most part, that's very clear for the public, that these are the subject. And it'd be voted on at subcommittee and then brought to the, to the full committee. So I, I'm inclined to agree with Counselor Coniff that if we want to deal with one aspect, we can deal with one aspect or two aspects that has been voted on by the subcommittee, that that would make sense for a way for us to proceed.
Yeah, that's, I guess, my concern too. Because I, I know you're referring that we've done before. But my recollection, Counselors can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's usually things like finance, that the numbers aren't going to change. You know, it's like, this is time sensitive and we need to approve this fifty thousand dollars for the dump truck by such and such. And that fifty thousand dollars, it's still going to be fifty thousand dollars when it meets. And whereas something like this, to me, the changes could be substantial, is my concern.
So, so, oh. Oh, me, oh. So, so our options then are up or down this particular public hearing. Move the second option, which was broader, back to subcommittee. And then in addition, the subcommittee will continue to discuss the bigger one, Counselor Zarek, that has a broader language. And then bring that, can we, can we bring that? Or would that have to be the next month, September?
I think unfortunately, it has to be the next month. But my, let me tell you what I think would work. And again, we'll take a vote on this with the counselor. To me, just because I, I think this shorter version of just the, where it's defined, the width and length, would be good to set a public hearing for August. We don't have to vote on it if we don't want to. But there was something, because I do feel like we should have something for this business owner to some direction of the way this is going. But I think Counselor Zarek has quite a bit of significantly different information or documentation in his version than what you have in your version. As I mentioned, there was something with the time, or if it's nine o'clock. But I was thinking, well, nine-
That's the second one.
This is a different-
I know, but those, that's the second one. But I was going to say, those two documents, to me, are significantly different. That would be nice if they were merged into one and voted on in committee. Is, I guess, what I would like to prefer for that, Counselor Zarek.
But my only statement would be that the, the two are mutually exclusive. One of the issues that's been brought up during this whole conversation is that there's potentially some, some holes and some questions in some of the language around the use of the manhand rail trail. And so the purpose of why I introduced those amendments, it looks like it's May fifteenth. The reason why I introduced those amendments is to clarify that. I think that, to some degree, it applies to this broader conversation about the pedal party. But I also think that, in general, it just applies to language that's important to evaluate because there's a lot of questions that have come up around the use of the manhand rail trail. And again, not just with this vehicle in regards to width, but in regards to our, our Valley Bike Share and electric bicycles and how they apply and the legalities around them, as well as what kind of, what kind of electric bicycles there are, if they should be on the manhand rail trail. So too, there's been some questions during this debate of what constitutes a bicycle and reevaluating that language. And so I think it's all germane to the entirety of the discussion. I think that by drawing it out more, we're, we're looking, I believe that setting a public hearing for this sets a deadline. And we're already two months in and we've made no movement on this. And who's to say that if we say, well, let's wait until September, we'll have made movement there in October and so on. So that's why I'm recommending that we just say, okay, we're going to set a public hearing. Our, our purpose, our agenda for the next ordinance meeting is we're going to discuss this, we're going to vote on it. We may, we may agree, we may disagree, we may, we may tie. We may say that there's no recommendation. But at least it gets us out of subcommittee and we're actually, we're actually set a deadline. Because so far, that hasn't seemed to have worked.
Oh, Counselor.
I have to agree with Owen on this. I have the document that he submitted on, it went to the city clerk on May ninth and then the fifteenth's meeting. It addresses the width issue. It addresses the hundred pounds plus issue. It addresses the electric vehicle, which is the Valley Bike Shares, and what's, what constitutes an e-bike and everything else. I think this packet right here is the baseline of what we all need to decide. And, and the foundation's already here. And I think that we've really, you know, Owen's done a lot of history and research on this. And I think that it, it's everything that we need to vote on, not just piecemeal it.
Counselor Coniff.
Yeah, I, I actually don't disagree with you at all. I just want to make sure that our process tonight is appropriate. And, and I think what Barbara is saying, and I don't want to speak for Barbara, never do I want to speak for Barbara, is that, that the narrowness of what we have in this packet, we either have to go in with the public hearing on that narrowness or we don't do a public hearing. And we just start the whole process over and maybe we, we don't do anything until September. Is that, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but. Well, I, I think you could decide to schedule a public hearing to consider Owen's proposal. We do have another meeting. Because we're only one meeting a month, we have a little more time as far as advertising. I told Owen that if I had what you guys voted, if it was to this or with any minor changes, as long as I had it by July twenty-fourth, when the ad ran, if somebody came into my office and wanted to look at what you were bringing forward, I would have it. Got it. So that, that's the only thing time-wise.
So they could have a meeting using this document as their basis. And they could make amendments as they, or they could change it. It's like, you know, as long as it gets to you in time to advertise it.
And I don't put the exact ad in, but I say it's available if you want to look at it. And it would be, of course, given to the council for the next meeting. What was that date, seven-twenty-four? Well, if you meet on the twenty-third, I want to on the twenty-fourth. Are we meeting on the twenty-third? We are? That's what Salem told me. Well, I'm in Italy. Oh, well, so I never agreed to that date. So I don't know how it got thrown out there. But okay, they can meet.
As long as I have the agenda by, you know, this week.
Whatever.
I certainly would like all the committee members there.
Well, in all fairness, Mr. President, all the committee's members weren't there when these things were put forward.
I know, look what the problem's-
I know.
So I'd rather not repeat this.
And I will say that I, I did speak with Counselor Coniff and I advocated for the same, actually, that we met up. So I don't know what, if there's, there's probably a communication breakdown, so.
I, is, do we know if Counselor Derby is back next Tuesday? Does anyone know? I don't either.
Check Facebook.
Can we, can we publicly say right now that we'll meet on the sixteenth and come back to you in a day if that doesn't work out?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, all right. I take back my motion.
So we don't want any public, okay.
I remove the second.
Is that correct? Is that what?
Because we have to retool this now.
Yeah, but, Counselor Zarek.
Um, I mean, well, I, I think that my, my, my request is for the purpose of, of going to retool and setting a date. Now, you'll have to tell me process. If we, if we set, if we were to set the public hearing like I'm asking so we can act on this and deliberate it, if for whatever reason we determine that we have to cancel the public hearing because we can't arrive at a conclusion, is that something we're allowed to do?
Yeah, just continue, yeah.
So then, I mean, I guess in the interest of expediency, I maintain my request that we just, we, we, we work on this agenda item that's there and either vote on it, amend it, and have a public hearing in, in August to go through, again, this kind of this broad, broader language that really helps us with a bunch of things, not just the pedal and party. But again, I think, at least for me, my impetus for this was really not in response to the pedal and party, but saying, oh, my goodness, here's the language we have. There's a lot of questions that are being asked outside of this. And, and can we answer that? So.
Yeah, so, oh, that's cool. I, we've withdrawn, so it's off the table, the motion and the second is gone. I will now set a public hearing to review bicycle language around width, depth, height, and weight of vehicles that ride upon manhand rail trail on August seventh. Fine. What, I don't know what that is.
The proposed amendment, the chapter.
Knock your socks.
Second.
We're going to, they're going to go with Owen's thing.
Yeah, put in the minutes, we're going with Owen's thing. And Bill has seconded it.
Okay. Okay, so, motion second? Any more comments? Let's hope not.
Oh, I have a question outside of this, nothing to do with this.
All those in-
Chief.
Chief, did you want to say something?
Um, no, you're headed right where I was going.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. So we have public hearing set. The subcommittee will hopefully will be on the sixteenth.
Yes.
All three people, I will be there.
Five fifteen.
And we can, we can hopefully come up with a document that everyone is comfortable with or-
To refer that this to subcommittee.
Oh, okay, then I, I make another motion to move what would have been new business up and the rules and regulations around safe operation of the vehicle. That ordinance, we will remove that from the city council agenda and move it back to September.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Oh, my goodness, we're still going. Property, Counsel Kuzynski. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Also, in that same public hearing, we will set public hearing for the cannabis equity application for eight-seven. We will also set a public hearing for the wage theft ordinance proposal for eight-seven.
Yeah, that's correct. I think the only comment, I think that Counselor President McCoy had asked earlier just to report back that the planning board voted unanimously in support of, basically, a- in support of, basically amended language that is available in the pack, and Planner Bag helped us arrange, and the ordinance subcommittee voted 3-0 also in support of that. So that, that's all I have to report there.
Okay, I think we still need seconds on both those.
Second. Oh, no, wait.
Second. Second your own motion.
Well, we're trying to be expedient.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Anything more in ordinance?
Do we have anything to, no, I think, we do probably have to extend the- Well, we're not gonna meet until the 7th, so that will have expired.
Mm-hmm, that's the last one.
So the last one, on off-street parking limitations, if we could extend that 90 days.
Second.
Motion second to extend for 90 days, the review of off, on-street, off-street parking. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
We haven't had a public hearing.
You're gonna wait. It's up to you. Well, it's, no, I just-
That one is not time-
Or set it for September.
It's not time sensitive.
Okay, okay. All right, but we did vote on that, so. Sorry, we're just discussing the public.
Back to you.
Yes, it does.
Counselor Kuzinski, property.
Like housekeeping extension on the request of inventory city-owned property for 90 days?
Second.
Motion second for 90-day extension for inventory city-owned property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
No other?
Oh, that's it. Okay. Rules and government relations, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three things to get through tonight. So the first one is simply, you all remember the municipal life plan, when you take two second votes, two second best of the years. I'd like to set a public hearing, take that second vote in August.
Second.
Okay.
I didn't know that was a motion.
Motion second to set a public hearing relating to the municipal life- Still questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Okay.
Great. Now, I've got two rules amendments that Counselor Riss brought forward late in the spring, and we're just getting around to. They're both pretty short, so rather than try and explain them, let's read them, and if we can discuss them as much as we need to. So the first one is, it's a motion procedure thing. It says, after public input and once a motion is placed and seconded on any measure, the chair may recognize any city official, member of a board, or committee to provide information on the measure to a counselor during debate on the measure. The need for the motion to be removed is not necessary. This rule shall apply to the full council and council committees. And the basic reason for wanting this one is that every once in a while, we're in the middle of deliberation, somebody says something, we go, wait, is that true? And we have to go through the whole process of withdrawing the motion, withdrawing the second, just so that we can ask the planner, the police chief, whether the thing that we're saying is true. So it just allows us to suspend Robert's rules in this one case, to ask city officials for their expert opinions in cases where it might come up in the process of debate. So that's, if, if, I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt this new rule.
Second.
Motion second to adopt the previously read new rule 6G. Still questions or comments?
I just wanted to ask if a counselor, if the chair didn't make that decision to recognize somebody, and other counselors had wanted that person to be recognized, if we could withdraw, we could still withdraw the motion and the second, and that process still could go forward.
Sure.
This just gives us an easier route to kind of move things forward quickly.
Exactly.
Just wanted to clarify that.
So the motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, and then there's an amendment to rule eight. The rule eight will now read, as stated in charter definitions, article 1-7, city council majority shall always refer to a majority of the full council membership. That membership shall be five members voting, with an abstention being a non-vote. Six members for a two-thirds vote when required by ordinance, charter, or state law. And then, as I say, a supermajority, if required, shall mean, shall also mean six voting members, because there are some cases where the word "supermajority" is used without any clarification within the rules. So this just clarifies what it means to be a majority, and what it means to be a supermajority.
Is that the motion?
Kuzinski has a question?
Yeah.
If I may.
Of course.
What was the original rule eight? Was it ambiguous?
Oh, I need to look it up. It's basically, this just mostly clarifies in terms of what the numbers, that like-
Oh, it just used words like majority and-
We mean five.
Gotcha. Okay.
So.
All right.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So that, or the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment to rule eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes my rules presentation. Also during charter review. So, nothing to vote on. This is Dan Riss's report, and I'm just gonna read it out loud. The committee met on June 27th and concluded its initial review of the entire charter, so go us. We will meet once in July on the 25th at 6:00 PM in conference room one, to begin the review of all the changes previously approved. We hope to send our final document for attorney review by September, and then to the council and mayor by October. It is the committee's desire that these changes can be approved by legislative act without the need for voter approval, as most are housekeeping language changes. But there, I don't actually know if I agree with Counselor Riss's statement, I'll read it, but there are some significant changes that might raise a red flag. I wouldn't call them that, but anyway. I will be sending the entire charter document out soon to the committee, Mayor LaChapelle, and the full council. I invite all counselors to review the changes, and to attend our next meetings, to voice concerns, or request clarification or explanations, as this would save significant time when the final document is presented to the council, respectfully submitted, Dan Riss. So that concludes charter review.
I just had a quick question. We're actually, regarding, regarding the charter, and then potential ballot questions and the special act that we've requested.
Yeah.
I had asked, I had asked the clerk when we need to have, when that needs to be placed on the ballot, and President McCoy, you could probably help me, when and if we get an affirmative from the legislature for those two ballot questions, we then have to vote to place them on the ballot, correct, as a city council?
Correct.
Yeah.
The exact wording.
And so, and, and city clerk LaBombard, remind me again exactly when we need to do that by?
The deadline for the council to put ballot questions on is October 1st, but the last meeting before that, September 18th. And I don't need that, let's put these on. I need you to vote the exact wording, and I need the summary from the city attorney.
Okay.
So it has to be approved by the legislature before that, and then you need to put, you need to vote wording.
And then potentially, if it's somehow in that no persons land between September 18th and October 1st, we have to call a special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that, if you want to put pressure on your legislator.
That wouldn't require a public hearing, right?
Right.
No.
And for what it's worth, I spoke to Senator Hemison's office this week. He says that they, it was favorably reported to the Senate. There's an internal rules discussion going on in the Senate about whether they want to send it to a second committee, election laws, or whether they can just vote on it, which way it'll go to the House. And that's just a conversation that's ongoing, and we're hoping, I, you know, I said, well, either way's fine, but please make a decision. So, yeah, that's where it currently is.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
That concludes.
Great. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to introduce the resolution against abuse of migrant children, and that they should not be used as pawns in order to make a statement to adults. I'd like that referred to a proper committee.
So that'd be rules, I guess?
I would think so.
I guess, yeah.
Okay, I was just, because I was just gonna say, if, if everyone has the opportunity to review as in the affirmative, you can vote on it, if it's, you do not have to-
You don't have to, but we've done that with, not all, but we've done it with most resolutions.
No, I don't disagree, I mean.
So I'll entertain a little bit to subcommittee to rules. Is there a second?
There is, Counselor Peak.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
You do realize-